Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Morrisville Town Council briefing session. It is March the 10th, 6:30 PM. I would like to recognize one of our elected officials in the audience, North Carolina House Member Dale Adcock, if you could please stand. Thank you for bracing us with your presence. You must miss town halls or something, right? Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being here. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember TJ Colley for tonight's invocation. TJ?
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
St. Patrick's Day is right around the corner, next Tuesday, and I've always been amused by the saying, "There's two types of people in the world, people who are Irish and people who claim to be Irish." But this is a very universal little Gaelic blessing, so that's tonight's invocation. Please feel free to join along. So instead of bowing our heads, let's raise our eyes. May the road rise up to meet you; may the wind be always at your back; may the sun shine warm upon your face; the rains fall soft upon your fields; and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand.
Thank you, TJ. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda and go through the Conflict of Interest preamble, there's a change to the agenda, the consent agenda. I think Councilmember Gargor has that?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the request on the consent agenda for the Carrington Mill matter, to have that placed on the new items section, which would leave just one matter under the consent agenda, and I mentioned this to Mark, I don't know if we would need to suspend the rules to vote on that. I guess both of those items, since this was the first time they're being introduced, I'm honest, that's still a little fuzzy to me, so I just raised that. So I guess we could take item 25 and put in the new items matter.
Okay, so we'll still be briefed on it and still vote on it. I'm sorry, we won't vote on it until the next meeting, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. But we still will get a short briefing on it, so, okay. Very good. We have that. And then according to the town of Morrisville's Code of Ethics, it's a duty of every council member to be free of conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict of interest. So before each meeting, we ask council to look at the agenda and note if there are any items that may present that issue. So any conflicts of interest with the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the Seabreeze agenda. What does suggest a change on the consent agenda?
Motion. And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you. We have four presentations tonight. First one is the Sunshine Week Proclamation. Excuse me. And unfortunately, this has nothing to do with the weather, so we need a Sunshine Week after all that ice and snow and everything. We want to proclaim March 15th to 21st, 2015 Sunshine Week. Whereas Sunshine Week was originally initiated by the American Society of News Editors to educate the public about the importance of open government, and whereas Sunshine Week coincides with James Madison's birthday, one of the founding fathers of the United States that wrote one of the leading commentaries on the United States Constitution, and the National Freedom Information Day on the 16th. James Madison wrote that "the consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives," and whereas Morrisville continually strives to promote transparency in the town government programs and processes according to the town's core values and the Morrisville Town Strategy, and adopted by the Town Council. This is done all year long by responding to public records requests, continually broadcasting information through different means to inform citizens, and encouraging citizen participation. And whereas the town of Morrisville fully supports the rights of citizens to have access to government documents and decision-making processes, and encourages these rights to be exercised on a continual basis, and understands that an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence. Now therefore, I, Mark Stolman, Mayor, on behalf of the Morrisville Town Council, do hereby proclaim March 15th through 21st as Sunshine Week in the town of Morrisville on this 10th day of March 2015. Next, we invite Nicole Tolby, our Chair of the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources, to come up and give the Advisory Committee report. Nicole, thank you for being here.
So, good evening. I'm Nicole Tolby. I'm the current Chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee. And this is our annual report to the Town Council. It covers the years of 2012 to 2014. So we're a little behind. This is covering the last three years of activities of the committee. So in the report, I'll talk about the mission statement, the committee members, what volunteer activities we've been up to, what support services we've done, recommendations that the committee has that we'd like to bring to your attention, and then future plans and projects. So what is our mission statement? The mission statement of the committee is to support the town of Morrisville by offering citizen input and committee advisement on a number of topics: park screenways and open spaces, historic spaces and structures, recreational facilities and programs, cultural events, and then communicating this information to the community at large. So in short, we advise on all aspects of park recreation and cultural resources for So this slide shows our current committee. Our committee is comprised of 10 members. We have a very, very, very demographic makeup of our committee in regards to ages, occupations, places they live in town, what they do, their gender and their race, which actually translates into some very lively discussions, decisions, and recommendations by the committee. So we use this demographic information and the experiences of the committee to actually consider the best interests of the town and the citizens as we're doing things. So we'd like to recognize two of our former committee members, John Briggs and Michael Baker, for their many years of service to the committee. They made valuable contributions, and they participated in many volunteer days and events. And just to highlight, for example, John, he was an avid runner, so he was always on the greenway. So he was always coming to us and saying, "Well, this section of greenway needs mowing," or "Trees need to be picked up," or "This needs to be cleaned up." And it was good, because he was actually on, like, remote sections of the greenway that didn't get a lot of traffic, so we could kind of keep track of things and make public works aware of what needed to be taken care of. And then Michael was also a very valuable member of the Veterans Memorial Subcommittee, and he helped a tremendous amount with our homework assignments in regards to concept designs. So they will be missed, and they've moved on. So as you guys are well aware, our committee is a very active committee. It actively supports many town-sponsored events, including all of the ones listed here and many more. We support the Easter Egg Hunt, the Halloween Spooktacular, the 5K Road Race, the Christmas Tree Lighting, calls from Mr. and Mrs. Santa, the Winter Fest Parade and Craft Fair, and then we support the East Meese West Festival, even though that is primarily supported by the Chamber of Commerce. But since it's a joint event between the Chamber and the town, we actively participate. And I'd also like to note that many of our committee members volunteer in other town-sponsored events, such as the Litter Sweep, the Green Day, the Stream Clean. So these are events that are sponsored by other departments that we also participate in. So as a committee, we schedule one to two activities a year that directly benefit the town. We have this living document that we call the Committee Discussion Topics, where the Advisory Committee keeps track of items of current interest, new activities that we consider for volunteering, completed activities, and then activities that we may have discussed and debated in the committee, but then we're no longer taking action on for whatever reason. So this slide highlights some of the activities that we did since 2012, since our last committee update. So we painted twice in the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center back in 2012, and then in 2014 after the flooding. And then we also have done an extensive amount of work in Morrisville Community Park, from basic litter sweeps to a lot of landscaping activity, power washing, doing the batting cage resurfacing. So we'll be tackling another activity or two in this calendar year. So we've supported several activities that the Parks and Rec Department has undertaken the last couple of years. So we have provided recommendations when asked, for example, on the Open Space Grant for Crabtree Greenway. We've helped educate our fellow citizens about the benefits of the bond when the 2012 Recreation Bond came out. We review designs and help shape the town's parks in regards to the Northwest Park, the Church Street Park. We routinely discuss special events, whether to change them up, recommend different activities, expand them. We have, we're always discussing the special events. We work to address topics and activities brought to our attention with the Veterans Memorial Subcommittee. That was actually because somebody brought it forward. We worked to name the Church Street Park, and then we wholeheartedly and enthusiastically supported the department's efforts to obtain accreditation. In fact, we actually met with the group that was here when the accreditation team came in. We had the opportunity to meet with them. So this slide lists a couple of items that the committee would like to bring to the council's attention. The committee unanimously considers the Veterans Memorial to be an incredibly important activity to move forward in 2015. We briefed you on the Veterans Memorial in September. We'd like your concurrence on the location so we can move forward, even if the location isn't the one we'd like, a location so that we can move forward. We believe that this is an activity that would garner community and veteran support, and could be completed without much investment of funds by the town. It's an opportunity to use a public-private partnership, probably multiple ones. We can do fundraising. The veterans organizations we know will help, and then it's a win-win for everyone. I mean, I'd call your attention back to the 2009 Welcome Home Picnic that we did, where people came out of the woodwork to make that a success. So we could do it again. At our January meeting, we discussed the Winter Fest Parade and Craft Fair. After much discussion of the pros and cons of that event, we recommended that the town reprogram the funding from this event and apply it to other events that might be better received. Some of the cons that led to this recommendation were the number of established parades and holiday events competing for participants in that same timeframe, the unpredictable weather, which leads to unpredictable attendance for the parade, the effect of weather conditions then on the participants in the parade, and then again on attendance, and then the short duration of the event, the fact that it's just about a mile and a half uptown hall drive. So then at our February meeting, again, this is all this year, Matt briefed us on the Spring Fest activity, and we think it's a great idea. We support this event becoming a signature event for the town. Compared to the Winter Fest events, the Spring Fest event will be longer, because it's going to be at least a half day, if not more. It will include music games, food, and a craft fair, and be held in June. So this would give the town two signature events. We already regard the Halloween Spooktacular Trail in late October as a signature event for the town, and since that's in late October, then we could move this or a similar type of activity up to the springtime, and then we could have two signature events for the town of Morrisville spread throughout the year. So what are the future plans and projects for the committee? So we've listed three of our highest priority activities on this slide. We'd like to make the Veterans Memorial a reality. In regards to the memorial, based on the discussion we heard on Thursday, last Thursday, at your CIP workshop, it would seem that the council is in agreement and would also like to see this activity or this project move forward in the very near future. We kind of got the impression that you would like to see something happen this year. So we just need a plot of land and a go-ahead from you guys with your blessing, and we think we can make something happen. In regards to executing the bond from the 2012 Recreation Project, we're looking forward to seeing the results of the feasibility study for the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center later this month, and seeing progress on the bonds move forward. And then we'd like to see more greenway connectivity within the town limits, but then also with surrounding municipalities. So with that, I am done, and I will take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Nicole?
I would just like to say thank you very much for all of your service and the committee. It's very impressive what you contribute to the town, year in and year out. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I'll take that message back to the committee.
I want to thank you for all your hard work and for the committee, and also really am in agreement with you on the memorial. And so I hope that we could continue to move it forward and give the land and have you guys make it happen, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Just recognize one of, I don't have my glasses on, but at least one other Parks and Rec Advisory Committee member is here in the audience, and I just want to recognize Bob Butler, too.
Here.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. And I do want to extend my thanks to everybody, too. And it's actually, I'm not sure, well, yeah, you haven't been here since the department was accredited. So along with thanks for all that you all do on the committee, we want to thank you for your help in getting the department to that level and to accreditation, because we're incredibly proud of our staff, and we're proud of the Advisory Committee that helped in that effort. So thank you. And then one other thing, and I think I've said this before, Nicole, but when you all plan your activities, your painting, your litter sweep, all that you do, you need to send council an email and include us on those activities, so we come out and help you in all of those cleanup efforts. So please include us as you go forward.
All right, thank you.
Nicole, on behalf of everyone up here, thank you very much for the presentation and for everything that the committee does. Thank you, Bob, for being here.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, next up, we are going to hear from Mr. Marcus Kinraid. Am I saying that right? He's a Revenue Director with Wake County, and he's going to talk all about the exciting world of tax reassessments.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the invitation, council members. My name is Marcus Kinraid. I am the Revenue Director for Wake County. That title is a little bit misleading sometimes. When people hear that I'm the Revenue Director, they think that I'm an expert in all things tax, and I'm not. I am the Property Tax Assessor and the Property Tax Collector for Wake County and the 14 municipalities in Wake County. Sales tax, I really, I get questions all the time about sales tax, and I just don't delve into sales tax. So if you have any sales tax questions, I can get those answered for you, but I would have to bring them back. A little bit about myself. I have worked for the Wake County Tax Office since 2002 as a manager. In August of 2008, I was appointed the Revenue Director about two weeks before Lehman Brothers collapsed. So the past six and a half years have been a trial by fire, quite frankly, as the Revenue Director, and I learn new things every day, and it's very valuable, but it is challenging in this market. I have a lot of topics to go through, and then I will wrap up with revale. So if you have revale-specific questions, I might cover them at the end. I wanted to start just with a little bit of information about Wake County. This is census data. I understand from the newspaper that the town of Morrisville is having a special census, so thankfully, I didn't put any Morrisville-specific census data in here. That was just pure luck. But the thing I think is interesting about this information is that Wake County's population holistically has more than doubled in the past 23 years, and we're now the 46th most populous county in the United States. Net migration, the census, and I believe this is the Office of State Budget and Management estimates, there's a net migration of 62 people into Wake County every day. That's 40 people who move here, and then 22 due to natural increase, which is births minus deaths. So roughly 62 new people every day, and our planning office at Wake County estimated that Wake County went over a million people last summer. Thirteen counties in North Carolina account for roughly 50% of the entire population of the state, and for the most part, they follow the 40 or 85 corridors, with the exception of Cumberland and Onslow County, of course, where we have our large military installations. Mecklenburg and Wake County account for 20% of the entire population in the state of North Carolina. And the statistic that really shocks me is that the projection through 2020 is that 42% of all the new people that come to North Carolina are coming to Wake and Mecklenburg County, 42%. It's quite astounding to me, quite honestly. So what does the Revenue Department do? So we bill and collect all property taxes for Wake County and the 14 municipalities in Wake County by contract. We measure, list, assess, bill, and collect all property taxes on real property. We bill and collect all property taxes on personal property. All those notices are on combined bills. We assess all the vehicles for the tag and tax together, which is the registered motor vehicles. As you recall, that switched to the state from the counties in September of 2013, the collection. We distribute all of the tag and tax collection money, which we receive from the state down to the local level. We respond to all customer service inquiries, appeals, and applications for exemption, exclusion related to property taxes, both for Wake County and all the municipal jurisdictions. We administer the countywide prepared food and beverage and the hotel-motel room occupancy tax, and we conduct the countywide revaluation project, currently, once every eight years. Something that's unique to Morrisville is we also bill and collect your stormwater fees for you. A question I often get is, how much does that cost? For fiscal year 14, we collected $13.9 million in taxes for the town of Morrisville, and we charged you $27,700. And for your stormwater, we collected roughly $415,000 in stormwater fees, and we charged you $823. So I think we worked pretty cheap. I hope you feel the same way. This is your property tax collection rate by fiscal year, going back to fiscal year 2004. Morrisville's rate is the dotted line, and I just compared it to the overall Wake County rate. Morrisville outperforms the Wake County rate. And the thing I think is truly fascinating, and something I didn't realize until I put this together, was that the Morrisville property tax rate was not negatively affected by the recession. It flattened your collection rate out, but it did not decline like the Wake County rate did, which I just think is amazing, and it says a lot about the property owners in Morrisville, quite honestly, and it's a good problem to have, for sure. For fiscal year 14, your overall collection rate went up to 99.68, which, if it's not the highest in the county, is right there, I think, with Cary and Apex. And that rate actually should increase for FY '15, not substantially, but it should continue to increase. So you have an extremely high property tax collection rate. Something we do in the tax office is we religiously track building permits. Building permits are something that we need so that we can go out and pick up all your new construction. We basically route our appraisers based on your building permits, and I track them and compile them and put them in these graphs. The magenta bar goes to the left side, and it's the total count of permits issued for the town of Morrisville by fiscal year. The green bar is the total cost on those permits, and it goes to the right side, and it is basically the sum of the total permit activity, the cost on the permits by fiscal year. So you can see, of course, in 2001 through 2004, Morrisville just had some incredible growth, just amazing growth, in the total permits issued. That, of course, declined in the recession, but it's picking up again as we come out of that recession. I put together some, what we call heat maps, to plot the density of building permit activity starting in 2007 and coming forward. So this is the area in 2007 where the building permits issued were clustered most densely, and the redder, the spot, the denser the permits. So this is 2007. This is a combination of 2007 and 2008, 2007 through 2009, 2007 to, uh-oh, I guess I had a scroll on there. I apologize for that. This is the final one, 2007 through 2012. You can see that clearly Morrisville is pretty dense as far as building permits issued and permitting activity, which stands to reason based on the growth you're seeing here. Here's 2007 through 2013, and through 2014. Most of what we do in the tax office is technical by nature, and when I give these presentations, I try to avoid being overly technical, but some of the things I want to talk about, I really can't explain without giving you the basics of two of the measurements that we use in mass appraisal. One of the measurements that we use heavily is called the sales ratio, and the Department of Revenue actually publishes a study every year that talks about what the county's median sales ratio is. And simply all it is, is it's the tax value divided by the sale price. And what we do is we take every market sale in Wake County, in Morrisville, and we divide the tax value by the sale price to get this ratio, and then we sort it, high to low or low to high, and we pick the median ratio, the middle ratio. Ideally, that ratio would be 1 or 100%, meaning that the tax value and the sales price are basically the same. What we've seen lately, of course, going back to 2008, is a situation where the median ratio is greater than 1 or greater than 100%, meaning that the tax value is in excess of the sales price. The opposite, if it's less than 1 or less than 100%, we would consider that the market we saw prior to 2008, where the tax value was typically less than the sales price. Homeowners typically prefer that, unless they're selling their home, then they want us to raise the value. We can't do that. So I explained this to show you this graph. The green line going across the center is what I would consider to be the target sales ratio, 100%. Tax value equals the sales price. I started this graph in 1991, and this is the town of Morrisville's sales ratio, and it shows how your tax values, your median tax values, held up against the market as we proceeded from 1991. The line going up here, right here, is the 2000 revaluation. So we brought assessed values back up to 100% for the 2000 revaluation. Then the median ratio began to drop again. This is the 2008 revaluation, bringing the tax values back to 100%. Then, of course, this is what happened with the recession after 2008. Market values began to drop a little bit in Wake County, and the tax value exceeded the sale price on the median sale. This, coming back down, is not the 2016 revaluation. That's the market recovering. So essentially, where you're at right now is virtually back at 100%. So the 2016 revaluation, I can't answer what the total effect will be. We're in process of doing it now, but one thing I can tell you is you will not see a large increase in real property assessed value as compared to what you saw in prior revaluations, just based on where we're at right now. Virtually, the median ratio is back at 100%. So we are in the process of conducting the 2016 revaluation right now. We do it once every eight years, so we don't carry full-time staff to conduct a revaluation. What we do is we bring in contract appraisers. We have 16 in our office right now, and they work with our staff appraisers to understand how we pick up new construction, how we list it, how we appraise it. And once they're comfortable with that, they take over listing our new construction for us, and our staff appraisers then do the revaluation. They live here. They understand the market, so I'm much more comfortable having them perform that rather than contract appraisers who don't live here. Now, if we were at some time in the future to talk about shortening the revaluation cycle to something less than eight years, then we would probably proceed with hiring full-time staff and have them in-house, because we would virtually be in revaluation mode all the time. We would either be working on a revaluation or working on the appeals. Two years to work on the project, two years to work on the appeals, and then we would start the next project. Basically, the way we work, we are working on a revaluation all the time, whether it's We, basically, the way we work, we are working on a revaluation all the time, whether it's officially called a revale or not, because part of doing a good revaluation is having good data. So our appraisers are out in the field every day picking up new construction, trying to get it in our system as accurately as possible. The better data we have, the better value we will put out when we appraise the property. So our appraisers are in Morrisville every day picking up your new construction, because you have a lot of new construction. The thing that's somewhat unique about western Wake County as compared to a lot of the rest of the county is that so much growth has occurred here since two thousand, that, quite frankly, a lot of the property hasn't changed significantly since we listed it. If a property is five years old, it probably hasn't changed that much, and we may not come back and actually physically inspect it as part of the revaluation. Most of the properties in your neighborhoods are homogenous, they're similar. The neighborhoods are similar, the construction quality is similar, so if we have good data and we have good sales, we probably don't need to spend a lot of time driving through that neighborhood looking for changes in physical characteristics. Now, it does happen, and one thing we have done in February is we flew the entire county. We hired a company to fly the entire county to take photos, and I'm sure you've seen the Google Maps, things like that, where you can zoom in on a parcel and you can look at it from forty-five degrees all the way around the house. But we just flew the entire county, so we'll have fresh photos, and we're looking at your neighborhoods via the photos, looking for decks we may have missed, fireplaces we may have missed. You can typically see those from the venting. We're looking for things like that that may slightly affect the value. Your commercial properties, we will value those using the income approach. We've done a market study, we've captured rental rates on apartments, vacancy rates, your rates on your hotels and motels, and we'll use that information to value your commercial properties. So we are probably about a third of the way done with your work on the revaluation. We'll continue to work on that through the summer. Our staff appraisers will spend more time in the field this summer, looking at a lot of the older neighborhoods. Our target completion date for the project is around Thanksgiving. At that time, we're going to finish, we're going to do some QC, we're going to study the neighborhoods, look at the statistics. If we feel comfortable, we will extract the data, and our goal is to send out the notices the first week of December, so in about nine months. And then we'll start the appeals process. Prior to doing that, we'll start a fairly extensive public education campaign, talk to the media, try to explain what we're doing, prepare people, tell them how to appeal. Something new for this revaluation we haven't done in the past is we will offer an online appeal process. We will put, we're putting better transparency tools on our website. Currently, if you go to our website and look at your property, there's a link for sales, and you can look at sales, but they'll only pull sales that are in your valuation neighborhood. We're going to enhance that to try to pull in comps, similar properties to your home that may extend outside the neighborhood, and also allow people to pull in comparable assessed properties, not just comparable sales, but comparable assessed, just to try to give them the information to understand whether our opinion of value is accurate or not, to help them decide whether they want to appeal. Any questions?
Any questions? Michael?
Just two quick ones, thank you. The sales ratio on page eighteen, you did it for Morrisville, does that, is that how the rest of Wake County looks, or western Wake?
Western Wake is similar to that. Wake County overall is at about a hundred percent. When you get to eastern Wake County, some areas are still at about a hundred and five percent, so they have not recovered to the extent that western Wake has.
And then the next question, other counties around us, like I think Orange and Durham, do they, I think they reevaluate quicker? Do you have that, does that go into any of your bearing for Wake County, or?
Durham County is on an eight-year cycle, just like we are, and they are on the same years, actually. They reappraised in two thousand and eight, and they're currently working on their next project for two thousand and sixteen. So Durham County is currently in lockstep with Wake.
Orange, I guess, then is?
Orange, I think Orange was on a four- or five-year cycle, and then they chose to delay. I think they were due to do a project in two thousand and thirteen, and if I'm not mistaken, I think they delayed until two thousand and seventeen. But their cycle is a little bit in flux, so I'm not quite sure exactly what's going on there, but I'm quite certain that they're currently at two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, so you don't, they have no bearing, then, Durham won't. And I guess you indicated Orange delayed there, so is that something that could happen in Wake County down the road? They could delay it?
The, you must do one every eight years, so if Wake County stays on an eight-year cycle, there is no delay. Now, if Wake County was to shorten the cycle to four years, then hypothetically, when the four years came up, it is possible to delay it. I would not be, I would not be in favor of that. A lot of counties that had shortened their cycle prior to the recession to a four-year cycle, when their time came up to do the project, they did the, they did the math and realized that if they lost that much value, it would put a lot of stress on their tax rate and chose to delay. And that, that may send the wrong message to your taxpaying public, and it also got the attention of a lot of people in the General Assembly, quite frankly, and said, you know, if you do a revaluation on a shorter cycle when the market is good, you need to do it on a shorter cycle when the market is bad. And so, that happened. I would not be in favor of that, personally.
One other quick question on that, just, then, is it in law too that if it falls below a certain ratio, that eight years, you have to do the reevaluation, fifteen percent or something?
Yes, sir. There was a, there was an escalation trigger that was put into law, I believe it was six or seven years ago, before the recession, that said if the median sales ratio falls above eighty-five percent or goes above one hundred and fifteen percent. And at the time when this was put in there, prior to the recession, everyone saw a hundred and fifteen percent and said, wow, that'll never happen. It did happen. Then the county is required to do a reappraisal within thirty-two months of being notified. And one county in North Carolina has been caught up in that, it was Union County. Union County was a county that had been on an eight-year cycle. They chose to go to a four-year cycle. They were confronted with having to do the revale and decided not to, delayed and went back to an eight-year cycle, and then got triggered by this ratio and were forced to do it one year prior, so they did a seven-year cycle.
Thank you. That's it there, thank you. Any other questions for the director?
I have two quick questions about the appeal process. There is a time limit that folks can appeal, right? Can you remind us what that is?
Sure. If it's a non-reappraisal year, then their time to appeal is right now, from January one until the date that the Board of Equalization and Review adjourns, which this year is April twenty-third. So they can appeal now, but what they're appealing is the assessed value as of January one, two thousand and eight. And that's, at this point, seven years removed, it's kind of a challenging burden. When we send out the new value notices, we're going to put on there that we ask people to appeal in thirty days. That's not a hard and fast deadline. We would just like to get those appeals in sooner, because there may be a lot of them, and that would, if they return it faster, that allows us to work them, resolve them, and communicate to your staff what your tax base is. But they would still have until the day the Board of Equalization and Review adjourns, regardless of anything we put on that form, which in a revale year will probably be sometime in June.
And, thank you. And then the other question is, so that's one way to get that rate adjusted, but if there are, if you see a lot of appeals coming from a neighborhood, do you all and do you, does your department actually then do a wider adjustment?
Yeah, we will track and target where our appeals are coming in, and if there are neighborhoods with extremely high appeal rates, that tells us there might be something wrong with what we did, and we'll send appraisers in there to look to try to figure out what that is, and we may just need to adjust the entire neighborhood.
I think, because you did do that in my neighborhood eight years ago, because I, we did not appeal, and I remember we all, the whole neighborhood got, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, because then you're, you're, you're kind of watching over for all of us, whether, you know, whether we all appeal or not, so.
Some people, quite frankly, don't appreciate us doing that, and we have, uh...
I would have been fine, but...
We went in and adjusted a few neighborhoods based on the number of appeals, and then we got further appeals from people whose values we lowered. They said, I didn't want my value lowered, so, you know.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
One last question.
Okay.
Maybe a stupid question, but after all, that's said and done, now we pay, our property owners pay thirty-nine cents per hundred dollars evaluation, so you see that staying the same, going down, is there any, is it too early to tell? We have to do it?
It's too early to tell. One thing that you'll be required to do is report to your taxpayers what a revenue-neutral tax rate would be. You're required to report it, you're not required to adopt that revenue-neutral rate, so, and I'll work with your staff to try to, to ferret out what is value increase due to revaluation versus what's an increase due to natural growth, because you can factor your growth out of that computation. But like I said, unless, unless market values continue to rise quickly in the next nine months in this area, which is possible, I don't think you're going to see a significant tax base increase due to the revaluation, or decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much for spending your evening in Morrisville. We appreciate everything you do and everything Wake County does for us. Thank you. Next up, we're going to hear from Benjamin Howell in the Quarterly Transportation Report.
Just a reminder of some of the different ways the town funds transportation projects through development, various grants that we apply for, state projects or funding for state roads, and also bonds, which we're funding the McCrimmon Parkway Extension Project through. Quick stats report on some of the grant projects we've had over the last couple of years. The Shiloh Greenway South, construction is complete and the Greenway's been open. Morrisville Carpenter Road, widening Davis Drive intersection improvements. The construction is substantially complete for that one. There's a few punchless items that the contractor has left to finish this spring, one of which is potentially doing some more work on David, on the Davis Drive intersection. And then the other thing is also revising some patches on Morrisville Carpenter Road near Savannah. There's three patches that, after DOT reviewed them upon a citizen complaint from Morrisville, they went out there, looked at them, the patches weren't quite done to standard, so the contractor is going to be required to replace those patches, and we worked with DOT, and we're going to have their three patches in a row, and they'll be replaced as one long patch, in order to hopefully help with some of the sound issues that have been, that some of the residents have complained about. Church Street Sidewalk Project, we've acquired most of our temporary construction easements that we've needed. We did finally get our environmental document approved, I think it was last week, from DOT, so we're, we're working on putting together the final submittal package to DOT. We're hoping to get that into them in the next month or so, and we're still hoping and expecting to be able to begin construction later this spring or early summer and get that sidewalk project complete. The Wake County CDBG Sidewalk on the northern side of Church Street between Traybrook Drive and Cedar Fork Elementary, the design has been submitted to NC DOT for review. As a reminder, that project will install a sidewalk curb and gutter on the west side of Church Street from Traybrook Drive to the backside of Cedar Fork Elementary School, and will also include a crosswalk at Traybrook and Church across church. And then Public Works is beginning work on the easement acquisition process now, too, so we're hoping to be able to get that project under construction in the next probably two to three months or so. One, a couple of quick notes that I don't have on the PowerPoint. We are still working on the two sidewalk projects we've talked about in the past on, that we've got NC DOT funding for, one on NC fifty-four and one on Cary Parkway. We have all of our easements we needed on Cary Parkway, we've gotten those. We've, we're finalizing our environmental documents and our bid documents. We hope to get that package submitted to DOT in the next couple of weeks or so, and as soon as they, okay, all that, we'll be coming back to you to get ready to get bids out, or we'll be putting bids out, and then we'll be back to you, hopefully, within the next month and a half to two months, to approve those bids and get those projects under construction. McCrimmon Parkway Extension, the Bond Project, as, as we've been saying, Public Works is project lead. The plans are approximately seventy-five percent complete. We will be bringing forth a transportation plan amendment later this year for some cross-section roadway network changes that are based on an access management report that we had done at the beginning of this project, to modify some of the roads in that extension area based on traffic needs and what can actually be built. Morrisville Parkway Grade Separation, the town, the town hall turn lanes on Morrisville Carpenter Road should be complete, hopefully within the next month or two. The contractor's supposed to be out there any day now, and is hoping to finish work by April, and then we're still waiting, we're still expecting six-to-nine month closure to occur in two thousand and fifteen. For the Hobson Road Grade Separation Project, the Church Street Crossing is still expected to, closure is expected to happen within the next two months or so. Right now, DOT is working with Norfolk Southern and the contractor on the phasing and timing for completing the Hobson Road work that's needed before they can close Church Street, but they are looking to try and get that done in the next month or two. The NC fifty-four corridor study, we finally have a date for the next public meeting. That is scheduled for April sixteenth in the council chambers from four to seven P.M. At that meeting, you will see preliminary designs, costs, and impacts for the corridor. The study is still expected to be completed later this summer. Following the meeting, they'll, they'll see if they can address any of the public comments, and they'll finalize the study and get that out. One note for the council, it should be on your calendars, there's a local officials' meeting that day before the public workshop, just for the council, just for the elected officials from the municipalities, and that meeting's scheduled for one-thirty here in this room. The Wake Transit Investment Strategy, the works continuing on that. The Transit Choices Report is still out there. They've extended the survey deadline until March twenty-second, so if you haven't read the report or haven't had a chance to take the survey, please go on waketransit.com and take that survey. And for the last part of the report tonight, we're going to, I want to talk to y'all about a corridor revegetation evaluation report that we had done a few months ago for the sec, for the clearing in the corridor that occurred between McCrimmon Parkway and the northern town limits. As, as you know, the NC DOT cleared a good bit of the corridor as part of the Hobson Road Grade Separation. That was because they were realigning track and also adding a passing siding in that area. This resulted in some massive clearing and, and I think surprised a lot of the town's residents, as well as some of the staff. So just to remind you, for NCRR, they do have restrictions on where you can plant vegetation in the corridor, and it's generally speaking, twenty-seven feet from the center of the track, and it has to be fifty feet from the center of the track within three hundred foot, feet of a road crossing, and they generally require a maintenance agreement in order to plant any plantings in the corridor. Staff worked with the landscape architect to document the clearing and develop options for revegetating the railroad corridor at several locations that are listed there. We went through, we took pictures, we met with NC DOT, we talked to NCRR, and our landscape architect looked at various options to, to see, you know, what, what actually, based on the limitations of the areas, what could be planted there to try and provide at least some visual blockage in the areas. Due to the unique characteristics of each areas, our landscape architect determined that there were two revegetation options. One was natural landscape plantings for some of the areas where there wasn't as much room to plant items, and then he also recommended in some areas ornamental landscape plantings in focus areas or near intersections where, where there was a little bit more space and, and where it may actually have a better impact. He also provided us with some cost estimates, and the report includes... He also provided us with some cost estimates, um, and the report includes, includes those cost estimates, which you should have the report at your desk as well as the fact sheet. The costs were divided into low, average and high. Generally speaking, the natural landscape plantings, um, he determined they would cost anywhere from $21,000 on the low end to a little over $30,000 on the high end, average being around $26,000. Ornamental landscape plantings on the low end would be about $34,000, on the high end a little over fif, about $52,000 with the average cost of $43,000. And then he also provided, um, estimates for each area. The, um, five areas on the left are recommended for the, as natural landscaped areas. The three areas on the right side of the screen are recommended as ornamental landscape areas. As you can see, some of the costs are, um, quite high for some of the areas and are relatively low for others, and it just depended, it, it all varied depending on the size of the area and what could be, what he thought could be planted there. If there is a, um, desire by council to move forward with, um, any of the recommendations in this report, we would need some more detailed designs. We would also need to, um, have some more coordination with both NC DOT and NCRR to see if we even would be allowed to do any of these plantings. There's a few of the areas that are gonna, that would be very difficult to get much of anything in because they're, um, sandwiched between the road right away and then see, NCRR right away. One of those areas being Church Street near Mason Farm Road. The two rightways pretty much come up right against each other, so there's very little opportunity to plant much there. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Benjamin? Let's drop down here. Chris?
Um, I had a couple. I noticed that this is also an issue on the south end of town, and, I mean, I could see it just from my daily travels, and, um, several people in, in my neighborhood, because they're my neighbors, have, have asked me about it. Um, and so I guess I'd like to also include not just Preston, but any other, you know, neighborhood. I haven't walked along the railroad tracks, but there, there've got to be some other areas that are affected by this.
There, there are, and we certainly could have another study done, um, expanding along those areas. The reason we studied this area is that this was the first one done that we could see, and it was very obvious because it was right along some fairly major road right of way, and it was very obvious to the traveling public. A lot of the work, um, related to the Morrisville Parkway Grade Separation is back in the neighborhoods, and unless you're back in the neighborhood or back in Park West or up by the apartments, you really can't see a lot of the clearing. Um, and there's going to be probably less that can really be done. Um, most of the clearing with the Morrisville Parkway work was truly done all in the corridor, and there aren't really any road right of ways nearby, so it would all have to be done on private property. Um, or, you know, I know, um, I think some of the, um, folks in one of the precedent areas have submitted a letter to NC DOT asking for some assistance with potential replantings or construction of a berm, um, behind some of their homes, um, in the railroad right of way. I don't know how that will go, but they have submitted that request. Um, so, we certainly could do a study. We would have to, it would, you know, probably take, um, some funding that would, that would need to be budgeted, um, for that study, and we would, it would be a little bit more difficult to deal with just because we, we'd probably be dealing a lot more with private property, um, whereas in some of the other areas, it, it was a little bit, in the northern area, it was either, for the most part, it would be dealing either with DOT or the railroad at the very edges.
Mm-hmm. So, I guess my first observation is there may be more to the list than just what's here, and that's okay. Are there any funding sources left from, was it this ARA project?
Yeah, the, um, DOT, the resident engineer, that, that question came up. I was out on site with her and the neighbors, um, a few weeks ago, and that question came up, and the ARA funding is pretty much all spoken for, um, and it was specifically for this railroad work and the grade separation, so there's, you know, even if there is, there would be money available, it's a question of if it could even cover it, um, because this would be considered more of enhancement. Um, I know the residents, you know, probably don't feel that way, I think, from NC DOT and, and the railroad's point of view, it's enhancement. Um, one of the issues that we've run into in talking with the railroad that, you know, if we were to move forward on any plant, on any replantings adjacent to or in the railroad corridor, not only having to get the maintenance agreement and, and ensuring that the plantings are maintained in perpetuity, the railroad does go through and do regular maintenance in their corridor. They cut down tree limbs, they, they throw out, they put out herbicide and stuff, so you also have to be very careful about what plants you plant and where you get them as, as far as how close to the railroad they are, because the railroad does make sure that, you know, does try and do everything they can to ensure that nothing can grow, um, that would, that would affect their tracks. The other, um, issue that we need to be cognizant of is that that corridor, while it is wide, there are future plans, and some of this will be dependent upon what comes out of the Wake Transit Investment Strategy, but there are plans to add, uh, more, even more tracks to that corridor. Um, and just as they require any plantings to be a certain amount of feet away from the railroad's center line, new tracks have to be, you know, a certain amount of feet away from each other. So, as they, if, it, the railroad is probably going to be very cautious about allowing much encroachment in their corridor, because as more, as they decide to put more tracks in that corridor, they're going to need every bit of that 200 feet that they have.
Um, I guess final observation, not really a question, but, um, I, I know from my experience out on the farm when they timber, um, it doesn't take very long at all for nature to replenish itself, and it's usually a lot thicker growth, because it's so wild than, you know, what you would plant, and if we, it looks very nice, the ornamental landscape plantings and such, but there's also a maintenance fee to keep that up, and if you don't keep it up, it arguably looks worse than if you just let it go, but that's not a real satisfactory answer now, because it looks pretty bad now.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Just a few, um, you've given us some options on both the ornamental and the, um, natural. What is the pro, process now? I mean, are we going to have to start looking at the budgets and figuring out, is the council giving you guidance on?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you know, we, we wanted this information prepared so that we would have information, um, and could know, you know, what actually could feasibly be done there, and so we've provided this to you, and really, um, I guess our question to council now is, you know, A, is this something you want to try and address in parts of the corridor? If so, are there only certain areas you want to address, or do you want to try and address all of them? And then, then the other question is, you know, we, we're going to need budgeted funds, um, to move forward more than likely, because, I mean, we, we certainly want to and, and would plan to reach out to NC DOT and NCRR if, if you want to move forward, but the likelihood of them, you know, having much in the way of funds that they could give us was probably pretty low at this point.
Okay. Um, just a couple more. Um, the, I did, I'm getting a lot of emails and complaints from people in the Kits Creek and Providence about the Church Street closing. I know there's not a lot we can do, but I think that, and we've talked in the past about how we can inform those constituents, those citizens on when the road is going to close, so I would ask that we, once we get the date, we would make an effort to do that, and then the same goes with the Morrisville Parkway, but we went back about a year ago, was that a year ago, where we went and knocked on doors and told them, I might want to do that again, so I just wanted to bring that up, um, to your attention.
Yeah, for the Church Street Crossing, I have gotten DOT, um, to agree to give, give the town, me, at least 30 days' notice prior to the Church Street closing. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit more than that, um, and so as soon as we have a, a idea of the, a more exact idea of the date, um, we plan to get that out over, you know, via the newsletter articles and online and every way we can, because that is going to be a, um, huge change for a lot of folks.
Okay, great. And the final thing, um, not really, your report's fantastic as always, um, there's a lot of potholes on Morrisville Carpenter Road. Um, what's, what are we going to do? Some of them have gotten really big. I know we've had DOT come back out, but if you could.
We've got an update coming for you on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On Morrisville Carpenter or Morrisville Parkway?
There's some.
Morrisville Parkway.
Both, 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 both. I hit two, a few a couple nights ago, and I was like, I think I'm going to have to get my tires realigned, but, um, both, Morrisville Carpenter, so whatever updates you can provide.
I would say with Morrisville Carpenter, hopefully the, um, turn lane work as that gets going, that's going to address a lot of those, because that's the area where they're going to be paving in, that's where it's gotten really bad.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully that'll be addressed, um, in the next month or two, and I think Martha has an update on Morrisville Parkway.
Thank you, that's all for me.
Ricky, then Michael?
Um, I'd like to, um, extend a little bit on the thoughts of, uh, Councilmember Gardner about the landscaping replenishment question that you have, and I think we need to give you some direction, if that's what you're asking for tonight, is that correct?
Yes, if the council wants to give direction.
Right. Um, the natural landscaping does have lower overall maintenance costs, so we have to think about prospectively, natural vegetation would be probably more cost-effective and also healthier for long-term, and it would be nice to replenish some of the trees and some of natural, um, lands. Now, we can't probably afford every corridor that you shared with us this evening, but we might be able to discuss what would be a, a certain target and then prioritize according to that target. So, I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in on that, but I'd like to see what kind of, um, approach we can take, um, through natural, um, reforestation or, you know, landscape.
I would be attuned to that. I mean, I'd agree with my colleague. Um, that makes sense, and then I'd be interested to see too, the future plans, because if they're going to go back and replant stuff and then tear it back up, that might be tough, but.
I will say regarding that, at this time, at this time, there are no definitive future plans. There's just discussions and, um, hopefully, you know, some of that may, I, there's a couple of things that, that it'll rely on. One is Wake Transit Strategy. Um, once that works complete, if, if one of the recommendations from that is commuter rail, um, there's a pretty good likelihood that, that NCRR and Norfolk Southern will want additional rail in the corridor in order to handle that additional capacity, um, in order to not interfere with the freight traffic too much. But then two, um, NC DOT and NCRR are also going through a capacity study right now as well, and that study will also, um, may end up recommending, you know, additional tracks in the future. Um, so there's, there's been different things floated out there over the years, but there's no definitive plans at this point, but I think, I think it's likely to probably see, that we'll see at least one more rail line put in there at some point in the future.
Yeah, because I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. For instance, I'm looking at Barbie Road, uh, NC 54 Overpass. Those seem to me, aesthetically, those were probably ones that we'd want to look at or more people see, or, um, and then I had concerns with the south also, especially if we can look at the plans for the, um, Morrisville Parkway Grade Separation, because to me, that's just like I, um, the 54 Overpass. Aesthetically, I like that to look as good as we could, and I'll make my pitch one more time, that if the town wants to spend money to make that bridge look nicer, maybe stamp it with Morrisville. Welcome to the town of Morrisville, so like they do in RTP, something like that, that would be nice, but just keep that in mind. Uh, and then is there any plans to then take the middle of this corridor and do the same thing that they've done at both ends, north and south? So, basically, from Morrisville Carpenter going back to Church Street.
Not at this time.
So that, we won't, you don't think we'll have a problem with that if they do decide to put in another line or cut it?
Well, I mean, obviously, if they, if they do decide to go and put in additional rail lines, there probably will need to be clearing in that area, um, but I have, I'm not aware of any plans in the near future to do that. Um, I think that's probably a good number of years down the road before they would decide to do that. The one, um, the one caveat to that is the McCrimmon Parkway Grade Separation, um, that it appears will be funded in this next step, um, depending on, as, as that project is, is studied by NC DOT and they determine how it's going to be constructed, there could be, um, there could be some changes to the rail, to the rail corridor related to that grade separation if they decide that it's better to take the rails over the roadway. Um, I don't think that'll probably happen just because of, of the, all the work that's, that has gone in recently there, but, um, there could be some more changes based on that grade separation project as the, as those designs get, get underway in, you know, probably after 2020, 2021.
Okay. Then two questions about the rest of the, um, briefing. Um, how's the right of way coming on the McCrimmons Parkway? Is that, Tony, is that you or the right of way for McCrimmons Extension?
We haven't, uh, secured any right of way yet. We've had preliminary discussions with a couple of landowners, um, but we're still working on the premise that the majority of the right of way would be landowners.
Great, thank you. And then the sidewalk that's going down Church Street and when it backs up to the school, Cedar Fork, I guess, it seems like I don't notice a lot of schools that have a, would that sidewalk be able to connect, there's no exit on that side for this elementary school or to get onto the track or anything?
Correct. There would not be access to the school from the backside, but it would allow a safe walking path from that area church around the long way back into the school.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
I wrote down some thoughts as people were talking. Um, I would in general propose that we wait until the project is complete, and then we'll see if Councilmember Gardner's, uh, kind of prescient about nature taking care of some of our concerns, because I, I think it will, and that'll happen.
Good luck. Careful. Don't drop.
Sorry. Let me know when you're done.
Sorry, I don't know what's going on, guy, I'm sorry.
Um, because also, uh, nature will sort of encroach as much as it can, and the railroad will push that back appropriately, and we don't really have to manage that. It sort of takes care of itself. Um, and aesthetics, I think they're important, but I don't think they're necessarily going to bubble up as a high priority this budget cycle, so I don't think, um, this is a big ticket item. When it's added all up, it's $250,000, which is pretty significant. Um, so I think that it would be best as a group that we sort of give staff direction to sort of postpone looking at this, not allocate a lot of resource or staff time until at least the project's a little further along, because then we'll be able to make better decisions at that time, because it's still in flux. Um, so that's not exactly what you were thinking, but I think.
I was thinking we do a little piecemeal. So, we wouldn't do $250,000, because we don't know the final outcome, but those areas that are completed, we would prioritize those appropriately.
And then I'd also, um, sort of add that this area is kind of, it's mostly roadway. It's not residential, like, like Chris said, in our neighborhood, people are having concerns because their sightlines are different and know these concerns, um, and this is almost purely aesthetic, just going along the road, and we'd like it to be nicer. We know that our, um, going up 54, Morrisville doesn't show that great right now in some portions. We'd like that to improve, but I'm not sure if this is the best bang for the buck, but I hear what you're saying about there's certain points that we might be able to really focus and make a big difference, and I might point that out as well.
Oh, thank you. Chris?
I'll go real fast, because a lot, a lot of what I want to say has already been said, but, um, will this information be online? Because it's not out there yet, right?
No, we can certainly post the, um, information online if, if you'd like.
Okay, yes. I think I'd, I'd like folks to kind of see this and weigh in.
Both the report and the fact sheet?
Yeah, sure. All the information, yeah. But although most of this fact sheet is in your presentation, isn't it? I think.
Yeah.
I haven't compared. Yeah, but, yeah, both would be nice, so that everyone has access to what we have access to here tonight. Um, and as far as next steps, is this just on our own personal timeframe now, Benjamin? Are we, do we have any, any pressure?
No.
This is our own internal timeframe now?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I, I, I too would like to take a little time and think this through carefully. Um, I think once you start in one area, I, I don't, I, you need to kind of do it all. Um, I, I, so, and that's fine, but I think I need to understand what that means as far as, um, a financial price tag, and then the whole maintenance. We have not seen any figures related to maintenance at all, and that is, um, concerning too. So, I, I think, um, while this is all incredibly important and the, um, the appearance of this town, the appearance of the railway, um, the screening for the property owners is all incredibly important, we just need a little bit more information before we kind of take a step down this, this path.
Yeah, and even if the council did want to move forward at this time, I mean, we would still recommend not doing anything till the project is done at least anyways, because, um, they are, you know, they're still getting everything stabilized. Even though the Hobson Road Grade Separation Project is nearing completion, there's still some stabilization work they're doing and stuff, so we would, we wouldn't want to do anything anyway, so they were completely out of the corridor, but, um, I think it's, it's certainly reasonable to wait and see if, you know, see if nature maybe helps us out some.
And, um, you have another comment, Chris?
I, I think, I, I kind of agree with what everybody said, but I think what would help me the most is to have, and I don't know if staff has time to do this, I don't think it would take very long, but to kind of have a, a quick assessment along the corridor of, because I know some places. Because I know some places where the railroad line backs up to houses and it's, I mean, it's clear-cut completely. And to me, that's a critical area compared to if it was a lumberyard or an industrial plant where it's not as big of a deal. So it's hard for me to say what we ought to do until I really understand the full picture. And I just haven't walked along the railroad track.
The one problem with that is getting permission. Because to do that, especially on the areas that aren't right along roadways, either have to get landowner permission or we have to get permission to get on the railroad corridor. And especially with it being an active construction zone, it's very dangerous to be on it right now. So, I mean, we certainly could work with DOT and, you know, see... And NCRR and see if we could, you know, get on the corridor with them. They have very... The railroad has very specific rules that actually are federal rules about who can go on the railroad corridor, when you can be on it, how you have to clear out of it when train's coming and stuff. So we certainly could do that, but it would take a little bit of work and some coordination with other agencies. Or we would have to, you know, go work with property owners and get permission to enter private property.
That would take a while. Doesn't the town... Doesn't somebody inspect the work and make sure there's no erosion?
It's all in NCDOT.
Okay.
And they have all their workers, the NCDOT and the contractors are all... Have to be certified to actually be on that corridor. We... I mean, they can take us on it, but it's just coordinating with them, you know, in time when they can take the time out to walk the corridor with us.
All right. Well, I think where I'm at, and I'm done, is I think there is a need within budget if cost allows to have nicer plannings in high-traffic areas. I think that would add value depending on the cost. And there are special areas where it impacts residents, but there are probably a lot of other places where it doesn't impact as much, so... But it's hard for me to say exactly what we ought to do right now.
So Benjamin, thank you for that presentation. My quick thoughts are that I'd like to see where the budget talks take us and kind of how we are after that before I would even entertain, you know, how do we address these problems? Certainly, if there's an ability for us to hit some of the high-visibility areas, however that's defined, then maybe we can look at some, you know, some spot improvements. I see... We have an example in our neighborhood, the old public library site that's next to the soccer field, that I believe was clear-cut back, you know, eight, 10 years ago. And if you go there today, you could never tell it was ever clear-cut. It is much thicker woods. So nature does kind of heal itself where it allows. It's low, no cost to that alternative. You know what's growing is going to thrive, so it takes care of the ongoing maintenance costs. So I think there will be an awful lot that nature will take care of on its own, but there may be some areas that we'll have to address in the future. And it sounds like with your timetable that that's going to always be an option in the future to address.
Yeah, there's certainly no, you know, no rush other than, you know, potential pressure from the citizens. But I mean, there's no deadline by... From any other parties saying, you know, if we want to get some done, we have to have it done by X date. It's just a matter, you know, once the town, you know, if the council decides that they want to do something with some of these areas, it's just a matter of, you know, once we have some budget, some funding budgeted, you know, going and talking to the different agencies and working out the agreements and getting the designs done and getting the plantings done, so.
Is the council okay with that concept of let's see how the budget plays out? And if there's room for some allocation of funds, that we can maybe target some areas?
With the information that we have tonight, we don't have a lot of detail on the maintenance.
I agree.
So would it be possible to find out what, you know, maintenance kind of thing? Because that would be our Public Works Department. That might be where some budget, you know, questions would come, is public work sustainment or something.
Well, and if I can interject real quick, I think ultimately, the maintenance, the cost of the maintenance would be dependent on what gets planted out there. This report is very generalized, just trying to give us an idea of what can be done. So in order to really be able to determine, I mean, in order to be able to determine a better maintenance number, we'd really have to look at, go into some more detail, have some more detailed designs and look at, you know, what exactly type of plantings. Blake may be able to come up with some generalized numbers based on, you know, sort of a natural landscape, but to get real good maintenance numbers, it's going to cost... It's going to take some more design work and a lot more work to figure out exactly what would go in there and whether it would be water-dependent or not and how often it would have to be cut back and all of that.
And I was just going to add, you know, throughout the budget process, there's a lot of things that will come up, and maybe including this, that you could mention if there's... I think we're just going to, you know, there'll be room or there won't be room.
Right.
Yeah, I kind of echo that. I mean, I think I'd much rather put money in roads and fixing the potholes than cutting back some trees down the road. I mean, we're...
All right. So I think the consensus is there may be some interest at a later time, depending on a number of factors and maybe some research, so... But as far as an answer tonight to drive the budget, I don't think it's there consensus, so. The last comment I just had, and this is for the council, if everyone is interested in doing another door-to-door public relations campaign for Kids Creek, Providence Place, Shiloh Grove, places like that, once we get this date, we can certainly put that together. I think that was very well received, and it's... While it's not, you know, it's not necessarily great news that we're sharing, I think people appreciate the fact that we're there, talking to them in person and not hiding from the issue, so.
As long as the weather's nice.
Okay, as long as the weather's nice. But if you all are interested, we'll put that together. Let us know the date as soon as you get it, and maybe we'll put together a council PR campaign to help with that effort, so. Anything else for Benjamin? Okay. Benjamin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The time is now 7:47. We're going to go ahead and do council comments, administrative reports, get to the public address, and then we'll take a break before the special use permit. So Martha, I'm going to turn it over to you for good order.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank all of the council members for participating in Town Hall Day next week. All of you were involved in some form or fashion, so great representation by our council. Tim Goss is going to be coordinating those efforts and getting you information on the plan for the day next week. We are also hosting, Tim and I and Tony, the Wade County Managers Meeting here tomorrow. We get together every other month, and we volunteer in Morrisville, so we're meeting tomorrow on the fire station. So we're excited about that opportunity for everybody to come here. And then just also, I'm working on the Roll Forward schedule for what's going to be coming your way over the next several months of meetings. Lots of presentations, lots of work sessions, lots of them driven towards information related to the budget, so lots of work coming through, including some we've mentioned tonight. We've got the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center. We've got the McCrimmon Parkway Extension. We've got Crabtree Hatcher. We have Joe Desiremore coming from the school system at the next meeting to just talk about how schools get placed, funded, and constructed. So that'll be a presentation at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And now I'll turn it over for the pothole report to Stephanie.
Good evening. So as we've already pointed out, a lot of potholes have popped up around town as they have in the entire area due to the winter weather we've been experiencing over the past several weeks. So we've gotten an influx of reports of these potholes in the area. So what we are doing on the staff end is doing our best to let the community know how to figure out if our roads are town-owned or state-road. And as a reminder, you just need to look at the street sign, and they're all labeled, and giving them the information of who to contact if it's a town-owned road that needs to be addressed, and then the information to contact DOT if it's a state-owned road to get those potholes reported, to make it as efficient of a process as possible to get those issues addressed.
Thank you for that pothole report.
I'd just like to add that Public Works has been working the last couple of days on potholes, and not only on town roads, but we've been doing the state roads as well, the real serious ones. We've certainly contacted the state to take care of the more general maintenance, but some that's imminent, that's pressing issue that's going to damage someone's car, we're fixing those.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Turnover council, just ask that you kind of run through this briefly since we've got a pretty heavy agenda still. Michael, let's start with you.
Only one thing, question, Jerry. I was wondering, a couple of citizens asked about a soft opening for the tennis courts up at Church Street. Any idea when that might happen with the nice weather?
Well, I had an opportunity to meet with Steve Dickinson from Public Works this afternoon to look at some of the work that's still outstanding there. Obviously, the weather the last few weeks has been terrible. We haven't been able... The contractor or the town hasn't been able to do the punch-list work that we've needed. We hope if the weather holds out to be able to finish some of it this week and possibly open the driveway by the weekend. If not, I think next week would be definitely in time.
Could I tell them that the tennis courts would be available then, or would that be further down?
Once we can do the soft opening and move the cones and everything, the tennis courts will be available then. And so at the latest, probably the end of next week.
Thank you very much.
It's just everything's been so muddy to this point, we just haven't been able to work on it.
They understand. Thank you. That's it.
Congressman Johnson?
Good evening. I'd just like to say thank you very much to the Public Works Department for all of their hard work these past several weeks. We have had a variety of issues between ice snow and, of course, now potholes. So we appreciate all of your support and prompt attention to the needs of the citizens in the area. And also, I'd like to say that we're... Everyone is excited for the new Church Street Park opening, whenever that can be scheduled due to mud, rain, and everything else that's been delaying our opening. But that is a great asset to the region, and we're really looking forward to experiencing that soon. Thank you.
I'd like to applaud our Public Works and for our PIO. I saw on Facebook the pothole thing, and I put the URL into my mobile phone, and it works really well, connects right to our request tracker. So I encourage everyone to just put that right into your phone contacts. I'm going to be absent the next meeting on the 24th. I won't be having office hours that morning. I'd love to meet and discuss any items that anyone would like to discuss with me before then, though. Want to say a big thanks to the Parks and Rec Department for providing the opportunity for some of our girls in the basketball program to play at Cameron Indoor Stadium a couple of weekends ago during halftime, the Duke Carolina Women's Game. It was very exciting for everyone, and it's just an exciting opportunity that you guys provided to some of our program persists. And so I thought that was sort of what makes our small town pretty great. So thank you very much for doing that, and that's it.
Thank you. Mayor for Tim Johnson?
Everything I was going to say has been said, so I'll pass.
All right, we like that.
I know you do.
Mr. Al.
Just a couple of things, very brief. First of all, I want to commend Mayor Stolman for taking lead on the Crabtree Lake public hearing that we had, a public meeting that we had last week, and thank Commissioners Hutchinson for attending. It was very well-attended. I want to thank you for stepping up and doing that. And I think we're going to get a lot more people engaged on that issue, so thank you. I want to congratulate the Parks and Rec for a great article in the NCRPA magazine and also the 919 Magazine, a great article on Brian Donnelly and the volunteers for East Smith West, including Councilmember Colley. And final two things, I attended the mayor's chair meeting this last week with the mayor, and it was on with Triangle J, and it was with Chatham Park. And it was quite amazing how many jobs and investment are going to be coming in because of that development. And then the final thing is I found the CIP work session to be very helpful, and I look forward to continuing to see how we can prioritize these projects and then look forward to hearing about our options with the better of the board, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
One more plug for Public Works. I understand the day after the big snowstorm, out of 20,000-plus residents, they received two calls for service, which is pretty impressive, so well done. That's it.
Were they both from you, or?
No, they weren't from me.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for those comments and everything.
Mayor Stolman? I've got one more administrative report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That had asked me to give you an update on the Civil War outreach.
Sure.
Our upcoming event in April. And Stephanie and I have been working together to put that together. First of all, 150 years ago this past weekend, General Sherman's army entered North Carolina, and so they went up through Fayetteville and Bentonville battleground to Goldsboro and Raleigh, and then out west to Morrisville. And so on Saturday, April 18th, we've got our event. Stephanie's got a write-up in the Connection Magazine. We've also got the Cary Magazine that's doing a special article for their April edition. Stephanie will be doing a press release. We've got a flyer, postcard, and banner, and also social media. So we'll be providing lots of avenues for folks to learn about that event. And we've got a website, battlemorrisville.org, that has the schedule for the day as well.
Thank you very much for that update. And I think it's all been said, so thanks again to everyone for their comments. You're looking at me like I should say something.
I was just going to see if we're going to be costuming going back to this.
I think there are some costumes in our future, but...
Okay.
Okay, yeah. All right. No other comments? Let's go ahead and do the public address. Stephanie, I want to see who signed up for this. We have our esteemed NC House of Representatives, Gail Adcock. Thank you for patiently waiting to speak.
Brings back a lot of memories. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As Mayor Stolman so gracefully announced at the beginning of the meeting, I am Gail Adcock, a member of the North Carolina House of Representatives. And it seemed appropriate and respectful and of great value to me to come tonight and just officially introduce myself, although I know every one of you from my days on the Cary Town Council, and to say how proud I am that half of Morrisville sits in House District 41. And I just wanted to assure you, what I hope you already know, that I want to be a good partner with the people of Morrisville and the town of Morrisville as their government. You have a big advocate for local government and local government control and authority at the General Assembly, and I wanted to let you know to please call on me at any time. I say the same thing to the citizens, because I want to help you in any way that I can right now. You've come to us with your legislative agenda, which was well-received by the Wade delegation, and we are in support of your request for a local bill, which should probably be filed in the next week or so. Happy to say we want to help you in any way that we can to continue to do the great work that you're doing to make Morrisville a great place to work, play, have a business, and raise a family. Please let me know what I can do to help you. Thank you so much.
But don't go away yet. Now, you still have contact with your old town council members, I assume?
Quite regularly, yes.
So rumor has it that we are going to challenge them to a cricket match.
Oh, cricket, oh, that should be interesting.
This fall, so maybe as a former town council member, you can join their team. I think they need some help.
I don't know about that, but I could be the referee.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, they're not calling cricket. Yeah.
Well, we'll get some word out, but we'll make sure that you're invited, too.
Thank you.
And I think it'd be a great time. And thank you so much for what you do. I know it's... You're being fed a lot of information right now. This is kind of the crazy season downtown, and appreciate having a level-headed person there to help guide some of these decisions. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. I felt like I had to wait about six weeks to make sure I was legitimate enough to come and call myself a member of the House, and I've got six weeks under my belt, so stay tuned.
All right. Well, best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have another former elected official, Mr. Pete Martin. Pete, good to see you.
Councilmembers, audience, I just wanted to bring to your attention, there are three items on the agenda that's of importance to me. That's Resolution Number 015021, 015012, and 015025. I'm happy to see that at least out of the consent agenda to the new items is 015025. I think this is premature. The roads are being built. They're asking to approve apartments. If they're approved, to take heavy equipment and while over the same roads that's being approved, I think it would do the rest of the residents of Morrisville a disservice, include myself.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other speakers that didn't sign up? Okay. Next up is a public hearing. It's going to take a little time, so let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we'll convene at 8:10. Thank you very much. At 11 after 8, I'd like to resume the meeting. Next item is a public hearing. This is Item 2015-011, the Wyndham Garden Inn Special Use Permit. I'm going to now turn it over to the town attorney, Frank Ray, to give the instructions for how this next segment will run, and appreciate your input here.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We mentioned this briefly at the end of the last meeting, but just as a refresher, the item you're about to undertake is a special use permit, and this application was actually filed under the previous zoning ordinance, and so, it's being processed as a special use permit under the zoning ordinance that was in effect for a number of years. And in land use parlance, a special use permit process is what they call a quasi-judicial process, which means it's kind of like court, kind of like a judicial process, and there are some more formalities attendant to it, one of which is that the information you receive will be under oath. So, the town clerk will give the oath to staff who's going to testify, to the applicant. Anyone who wants to bring evidence to you on this matter will do so under oath, either tonight or in a subsequent hearing. And as you'll hear from Ms. Tanner, the special use permit, in order to be granted, you as council have to make six findings, and you make those findings based on the evidence presented to you in the hearing. So, I know some of you are very industrious, but this is not the time to Google or do your own research. The idea is you base your decision on what is presented to you tonight and at the subsequent hearings. If you need more information after you get it, you ask a question, staff will chase it down, or the applicant will chase it down and bring it back to you at the next meeting. So, it's not like you're, just have to set up your mute, but you do just engage in the hearing, and all the evidence is heard by all of you at the same time. After all the evidence is in, then you would base your decision based on the evidence. The law says you should not have a preconceived idea one way or the other. You should be like a jury, you hear the evidence, and you base your decision on what you hear. And after all the evidence is in, you make a decision. Between planning, staff, and I, we will write up your decision in the form of a decision that defines whether each of the six specific findings have been met and whether the special use permit should be granted or not. And I'm obviously happy to answer questions as we go along, but that's the preliminary.
So, Frank, the time, I know we're going to vote on this at the end of April, so there's two more meetings after this one between now and then. Are those just additional public hearings if needed?
I think Ms. Tanner will go through it, but my understanding, the idea is that the staff will present their information, the application, the staff review, and the spin-through planning and zoning for the recommendation. That'll all come into you tonight, and then the applicant was requesting to present their additional information to you next meeting. And then, if you needed a third meeting, you'd have it on the April 14th. You may or may not, depending on what other information. But then, you'd be set up to make a decision at the end of April. So, tonight from the staff, next time from the applicant, and then the third, if you need it.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Courtney, I'm going to turn it over to you, but do we need to get sworn in first?
Yes, anybody that would be speaking tonight, or may speak tonight outside the council needs to be sworn in at this time. And if you haven't already done so afterwards, make sure you sign in at the computer out there, so we just have a record who was sworn in. So, turn it over.
So, I'll assume this is opening the public hearing with...
Well, let's make a motion to open the public hearing then.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
If you ever say aye, aye, public hearing's open. Go ahead.
I'm going to call out the names of those that have signed up, and what I would like to do is go ahead and affirm you, so that I can do the swearing-in, or what I call it affirmation, that's just the other way that you would swear that what you're saying is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So, those individuals that are signed up here, if you could please stand, and I'll proceed with the affirmation, and I'll call out your name for the record into the audio as well, so we can make sure that that is recorded. If you are staff and you're being sworn in, you can come up here as well, but I need to make sure that you sign in and that that is obtained in the record as well. So, I'll call your names. I'll start with Duke Boykin, Kardik Patel, Courtney Tanner, Benjamin Hitchings, Benjamin Howe, Tim Goss. Is there anybody else for staff that will be presenting? Okay. If you could please raise your right hand in the air, and after you're done, if you could just say "I do," and that'll conclude the process. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give during the public hearing of briefing Item 2015011 Wyndham Garden Inn Special Use Permit Request is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Courtney, can we now open our envelopes?
Yes, you can go ahead and open. As part of the information, I want to go ahead and put a record into the staff's history. I know it's not the one, but it's actually the one that I'm giving the secret. On the request that you have before you was submitted under the old zoning ordinance, which requires a special use permit and associated site plan. The property owner is Krishna Hotel, and they are requesting to construct a hotel located on the site that's near the intersection of Sorrel Grove Church Road and Airport Boulevard. On the aerial on the presentation is the parcel outlined in red, and just a couple of benchmarks. Cracker Barrel is located where my mouse, and you have Bojangles located on the other side of Airport, and there's some hotels as well. The total site acreage is 2.52 acres, and it's currently zoned Regional Activity Center. But again, at the time the application was submitted in 2013, it was under our old zoning ordinance, and the zoning at that time was office and institutional. It is a four-story hotel, it's a little over 59,000 square feet, and has 84 rooms. They are proposing to construct 95 spaces, which does meet the minimum requirement, and of those 95, 23 will be compact, four will be ADA, and a portion of it is located underground due to the topography of the site. The proposed impervious is 40, which is far underneath the maximum allowed of 65. The site meets the setbacks. It is located in the Regional Activity Center, as identified on the land use plan, and as I touched earlier, it is surrounded by a variety of restaurants, hotels, and there's also some single-family older residential homes located along Markham. The site's located in the 100-year FEMA floodplain, and it's also located in the Neuse River Basin. There are no significant impacts proposed to the buffer, and it's already located in the town's corporate limits. Just a few of the site plan elements here. If you take a look at the green arrow, that's going to be one entrance that's located off of Sorrel's Grove Church Road, and the red arrow on the presentation is the entrance off of Airport Boulevard. They are required to install sidewalks along Airport as well as Sorrel's, so those are transportation improvements that are proposed. However, due to the existing four-lane divided median, excuse me, not divided median, but a median... a median, it's five lanes out there, there's no median. For a transportation plan, it does call for a median, but you cannot safely install half of a median. So prior to construction plan approval, they will have to prepare and provide payment in lieu for any improvements they can't actually construct, because it's simply just not practical. They will also be providing an additional roadway light, and that's the purple arrow on Sorrel's Grove Church Road. The buffer, including landscaping buffers, as well as the riparian buffers, as well as the stormwater, they all comply with the regulations that were in place at the time the application was submitted. And here's a copy of the elevations. And just from perspective on where my arrow is, this is where the parking lot's located. Underground parking would come in from the right-hand side, and then airports on the left-hand side. Yes.
Clarification question, that purple arrow, that was a street light, not a traffic light, correct?
Street light, I apologize.
That's okay.
No, that's a, I, I, thank you, I appreciate that.
A special use permit, in order for the council to approve, there are six findings that have to be met. The findings, I've listed them on the screen, and the first finding has to do with the development or use endangering the public. Staff is of the opinion that what has been provided by the applicant to date, including conditions proposed by staff, that there are no impacts to the public health and safety. And furthermore, they are improving the pedestrian safety by adding sidewalks along Airport and Sorrel's Grove Church Road. The second finding deals with whether or not the proposed development or use will substantially injure the value of adjoining property. The appraisal that was provided by the applicant as part of the review process was dated January 11th, 2009. And town staff is of the opinion that due to the outdated nature of the appraisal, it provides no information as to whether or not that this finding is met. There is some awesome additional documentation provided, an STR report, and that's located on page 39 of attachment two. Staff has taken a look at that, and again, we do not feel as if it provides any value to answering the question of whether or not this finding has been met. So staff is of the opinion that no evidence, oral or otherwise, has been provided to date demonstrating that building a hotel at the site will not substantially injure adjoining property. I will speak more to what the applicant is planning on doing to address that towards the end of my presentation. And then finding number two speaks to whether or not the proposed development is in harmony, scale, voltage, coverage, density, and the character of the navy hood. As I had mentioned before, there are several hotels within this area, and staff is of the opinion that it is consistent. It's a four-story hotel. The existing hotels along Airport range from three to seven stories. It falls well within that range. And there's also uses that are in character of a commercial area, including restaurants or supporting uses for a hotel. Staff is of the opinion this finding has been met. The fourth finding is that the proposed development or use is generally conforms to the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. With the conditions that staff is proposing related to transportation improvements, as well as the fact that a hotel is consistent with a regional activity center, staff is of the opinion this finding has also been met. The fifth finding is that the proposed development is appropriately located with regards to transportation, water, sewer, fire, police, and other similar facilities. Staff is of the opinion that there is adequate fire and police protection for the site. They are having to install any appropriate water sewer connections themselves at no cost to the town, so we are the opinion that there are adequate services in place. The sixth finding is that the proposed development or use will not cause any undue traffic congestion or create a hazard. Staff is of the opinion, again with the conditions proposed, which I'll cover at the end of the presentation, that this finding two has been met. Next, I'm just quickly cover both the staff's recommendation as well as the planning and zoning boards. The planning and zoning board did recommend denial of the special use permit, because they were of the opinion that the applicant did not provide any evidence demonstrating that finding number two had been met, and that there is nothing to state whether or not, state this use would not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. That information was provided to the applicant, and they are in the process of preparing information to give to council. And their hope is that this hearing will remain open up until the next meeting on the 24th, so they can bring back information to answer this finding at that time. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit, subject to four conditions. The first condition being that they do provide adequate testimony, written or verbal, that this development meets finding number two, or finding number two is met. The second condition is that a payment in lieu of $6,000 towards the cost of a future signal on Airport is paid prior to construction plan approval. The third is that the applicant provides their portion of the transportation improvements with a payment in lieu, and that amount will be determined as part of the final construction plan approval process. And the fourth finding is they provide an navigation easement as required per the zoning ordinance prior to the release of a certificate of occupancy. This special use permit has met and exceeded the public notification process. There has been a newspaper notice, a mailed notice to all property owners within 500 feet. It was posted on the public notifications on the town website. Included in next week in Mooresville, the property was posted, and we had a public comment session at the planning and zoning board, and there's a public hearing being held in front of council. Again, the next step is to keep the hearing open until the 24th, so the applicant can provide any additional information to meet the finding, and then keep it open to April 14th. So if there's any outstanding questions, those can be answered prior to the council taking action on April the 28th. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The applicant has signed in, however, is asking not to speak until next time, when they have the information available. But if you have any specific questions that need to be answered that I'm not able to do, they are here to do that as well.
Does that include the staff's presentation for the night?
That concludes staff's presentation, yes, sir.
Okay. We can start down. Chris, do you want to start, or do you need a few minutes?
I don't, actually, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay. Any questions for staff, Councilmember Ral?
Not yet.
Okay. Mr. Comback, you're lizard.
I wish I could read this all first, and then, I'm sure then I'm going to have questions, Courtney.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. This public hearing will remain open.
I was wondering why Frank was at the P&amp;Z meeting, because I read the minutes from another item, and that's why.
I guess the presentation that was up there, I don't see that in the packet, so that'd be helpful to have that.
Certainly, I can provide that to you.
Otherwise, this just needs to be processed, so I'm not prepared right now.
Okay. All right. We have plenty of opportunities, so.
Yes, I am of the same consensus with needing to digest this a little bit. The presentation would be helpful.
Just a few questions. Could you pull up the picture of the property? Yeah, the overhead, thank you. What's on the left in the corner? What's that building?
Over here, or?
That one, yeah.
That is a single-family residential structure. It's an older home.
So are they the ones that are saying that their property's being impacted one way or the other?
There has been no, nobody has provided any testimony. It's really a burden to the applicant to demonstrate that they are not negatively impacting, but I have not heard from that property owner.
How many acres is that property, the residential?
I would have to look. I don't know off the top of my head.
And the one that we're looking at is how many acres, this parcel?
It was a little over two acres.
Okay, so that looks like a little less, or a lot less. Okay, a couple more quick questions on the transportation improvements. Is there going to be a left-hand turn lane put in on Airport, or is that part of the median? Or they won't, you won't have access to make a left-hand turn if you're going towards 40?
I'm going to have Benjamin Howe answer the question, since he reviewed the transportation component.
Thank you.
At this time, there is a two-way left turn lane already on Airport Boulevard, so that will be there, and there will be no restriction on exiting traffic from the hotel site.
Okay, so you don't think there'll be a problem with people making left and right?
No, DOT has reviewed, preliminary reviewed the site plan for, as far as driveway permit issues, and they have agreed that having that entrance be full access should not cause a problem.
Thank you. As the outdoor lighting, is there any thought about LED lighting?
It was up to the applicant to provide it, and they did not include that as an option.
So it's not in our, oh, okay. At the time, there was no policy. Is it now in our town ordinance to have LED lighting?
We did a text amendment to allow it at one point in the old zoning ordinance. I would have to go look at the timing as it relates.
That's fine, but they could choose to use it, do LED lighting if they wanted to?
Yes, that is an option available to them.
And then one more thing about, just an amenity, is, do they have a pool, and is it indoor or outdoor?
I would have to have the applicant answer of any amenities that they have on the site.
They can do that when they brief it next week.
Certainly.
Thank you. That was it. Yeah, go ahead.
Courtney, the entrance on Airport, does that line up with anything across Airport Boulevard? Is there an entrance?
It does not. If you look at the site plan packet that I provided, if you take a look at sheet C1.2, you can see that they do not completely line up with the, with the Holiday Inn across the street.
Which actually might be a good thing.
Unfortunately, lining it up impacts the stream on the site significantly.
And you did say there's sidewalk along Airport and Sorrel's Grove, right?
They will be installing it, yes.
Okay. Is there a sidewalk out there now? In front of Cracker Barrel?
It does not, per the aerial, I don't believe so.
Sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Courtney, if I could, one of the recommendations you had was a payment in lieu of $6,000 towards a signal. Is there have been other people paying into this same signal fund? Where eventually would the signal be? Sorry, Benjamin, I should have got you.
I'm going to have our transportation planner come back and answer that question.
The signal location will ultimately be up to NC DOT. We need to look at some prior records to see, you know, if the prior folks who have paid into the signal fund, if it was location limited. We've had initial discussions with NC DOT, and it would most likely, there's a, it would either be at Sorrel Grove Church Road and Airport Boulevard, or it's Slater and Airport Boulevard. DOT has indicated that they believe that there's a bigger safety issue at Slater Road and Airport Boulevard, and so they would prefer to see a signal there, and which is one of the reasons why the condition associated with this is for a signal along Airport Boulevard, to give us that flexibility to work with DOT and ensure that the signal goes in the proper location.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Courtney, is there a copy of the adopted land use plan in this packet somewhere?
No, but I can provide a copy. Did you want the map or the entire plan?
Oh, they didn't like, the map.
The map. And I also misspoke. There is some existing sidewalk along Airport. If you look at the existing conditions sheets, it'll be tiny into one that runs along Slater up to the site.
Courtney, I assume the...
Thank you.
I assume the hotel will have some kind of appropriate sound buffering for the, due to its proximity to the airport?
There are sound attenuation requirements that they have to meet under the old zoning ordinance.
And have they met them?
They haven't provided that documentation.
That's just part of it, yeah.
It was submitted as part of the building permit.
Yeah.
And that's finalized.
Councilmember Ral?
The one question I would have, and maybe they can address this when they present next set time, is the timeline, if this were approved, what's their expected timeline of when, I'm sorry if I missed it, I can go back and read it, but I'd want to know that. And then is there any way to forecast future economic impact in terms of funds or revenue that would come into town from this type of development?
I think that might be outside of what...
Is that outside the use permit?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you look at the six items here...
Oh, okay, so we're limited to that, I'm sorry.
We're limited to getting comfort or discomfort, whatever we want with those six tags. That's what you, that's what we have to be focused on, is how are they stacked up against this? All this other thing, the pool economic, that's all nice, but it has nothing to do with our decision.
Okay, I got you. This is the second time.
That's okay, that's okay. I just want to make sure, because it's, I know we get into a lot of things with a normal process.
That's what I, my...
And just, if you look at the six, stick with the six, you'll be in good shape.
I'll strike that question.
Okay, strike it.
Can I jump in there, then? I got another one.
Go down here.
Courtney, and for finding number one, where you said including the conditions proposed by staff, which conditions are you referring to?
Both the transportation conditions. One with regards to the signal, and one the $6,000 payment in lieu for that, since that would be a safety improvement.
Okay.
And the other condition is related to the improvements on Airport that can't be constructed, such as a parking median. There's some other little ones related to where the stream is, as well as some culvert and, but those are just, they're not practical to install at this time. So we'll take the payment in lieu instead. And it's our opinion that those then help substantiate that it's not going to materially endanger the public health or safety.
It's a 1 and 6, kind of, because it hit, those hit six too, right? Traffic habits?
It does also get with the traffic congestion as well.
We're going to go down here for any follow-up questions. Michael?
There was, this is eligible for a protest petition, and nobody, did anybody submit anything?
It's not a rezoning. It's a special use permit.
So they can't file anything like that?
Anybody that has an objection and has factual information as to why they object is welcome to participate in the public hearing process, but there is not a protest petition option similar to a rezoning.
And has anybody come before, did anybody come before P&amp;Z?
There was no public comment provided at the planning and zoning board.
Have you heard anything from, to staff about this?
I have received phone calls, but because it's not part of this, I can't go into details other than to say that I've really received a phone call, inquiries based, just signs out there.
Thank you.
So to that, to that end, we were advertising three public hearings, so maybe we should be careful of that, and not, not cancel that third public hearing, because we've advertised these three dates in case folks want to come and speak.
The notice, just so we're clear, the notice that I mailed said that the hearing was for today. The sign posting said that the hearing was for today. The posting sign will be pulled tomorrow.
You didn't advertise these three hearing dates, just today's date?
I advertised when it opens.
Got you.
And then the council can leave it open as long as necessary to collect all the information.
Good. Travis Johnson, do you have any questions for Courtney?
Just a point of order about the payment in lieu for the median. The recommendation of the planning board was to ensure that the payment in lieu was secured prior to the approval of the construction plan. Is that customary, or is that...
It's how we, it's how we collect.
Okay.
Any payment in lieu, we typically issue a conditional letter of construction plan approval, and in that, it outlines bonds that need to be posted, any PIL that needs to be paid.
Okay, so that would be consistent with the recommendation, then?
I put prior to construction plan approval, just so it's clear to the applicant, but it's customary with our current policies that we have in place.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Colley?
I guess if I could, if you guys would indulge me, if you could go through finding two again, and just, pretty much just say everything again, because now I'm more able to process everything, and that's the one it looks like we're going to be honing in on. And any thoughts about what we can expect to see or hear at the next meeting?
Certainly. So the property owner has secured an appraisal firm to take a look and prepare information to bring back to you at the 24th meeting, that will speak to whether or not this proposed use will substantially injure the value of adjoining property.
Are they appraising all the properties around it?
I cannot speak specifically, because I don't know what they're, all I know is their task at hand is to provide you information, so that they can clearly demonstrate that this finding is met. But the burden is on the applicant to do so, and that's what they're doing now.
And would we expect to see anything more than just simple appraisals, like some kind of comps where a similar project went in, or something like that, that did or did not materially change the value?
I have no idea what they're going to provide. You know, when staff reviews for special use permit, you know, we can make recommendations, you know, as to whether or not we believe what they provided us. So really, what you're seeing presented to you is the same information I provided to them back as when the application was submitted.
Will they be presenting that to P&amp;Z, or directly to us at this point?
It'll be directly to y'all at this point, at the meeting on the 24th.
Will you be seeing it for the first time, just as we are seeing it for the first time?
Um-
At that next meeting?
I don't know if they're going to hand it in person or deliver it earlier. I don't have an answer to that question.
Do we receive it earlier, if you guys do, or does it have to be?
Everything that you will receive has to be during the public hearing. So that, and that's why I said to keep it open through the April meeting, because you're going to be receiving new information. And I know you'll want to, you know, read that information, circle that information, and come back with questions in April. Yeah, you mean, because they, I mean, they may hand it and they may answer all the questions that you have, you know, at that meeting, but I can't get it to you in advance of the meeting. I can only hand it to you at the meeting.
But staff will have recommendations, like they, like you guys recommended this time?
If we have it in advance, we may not have it in advance of the meeting. You mean, they may physically bring the paper with them and hand-deliver it as evidence. So I can't, I don't know.
There'd be opportunity two weeks after that to ask.
Yeah, I would imagine. That would just mean we're just pushing it out another two weeks.
Yeah, so.
Uh, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
No problem. All right. Any further questions for staff?
Just one procedural. What's the vote have to be on this? A simple majority, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Simple majority has to make the findings.
Yeah.
I will not be voting at the next meeting.
No, we will not, we will not be voting on this at the next meeting.
Yeah, and-
Could choose to.
Trust me.
No, I don't want to.
I'm not.
I don't see, I don't see.
Tell you right now, I'm not, so.
I don't see how many, but-
I'll be voting at the end of April, so.
There'll be a lot of evidence presented.
And I will not be available at the next meeting, so Ben Hitchens will be covering in my absence at the next meeting.
All right, so Frank, procedural, do we just continue the public hearing then? There's no-
Yes, sir.
We don't close it down or anything, so this public hearing will continue in two weeks on March 24th. Thank you very much, Courtney, for your time this evening, and thank you for the, from the applicant for being here tonight, and looking forward to hearing, I mean, next two weeks from tonight.
Keep your envelopes.
Keep your envelopes.
No, and that's, yes, as a reminder, no phone calls, emails, anything outside chambers about this subject. Everything happens right here.
Even amongst ourselves.
No emails either, just all-
No emails. We'll have plenty of time here.
You get a call, you're the person, the person calls you to Frank, or sort of stuff.
Any inquiries, questions for anyone public, just forward them to Frank and Patrick Courtney. Okay. All right. Next up, section nine are new items. Again, we added the Carrington Mill piece to this, and I'll put that in last. The first one is item 2015-024, Consider Capital Improvement Plan Policy Amendment. This is our first brief, and Jeannie, you're going to head that up in five minutes?
Pause.
All right, go for it.
Time doesn't start until I'm, click on the clicker, right? Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, for your consideration, staff's prepared a draft CIP policy for your review and your guidance to any modifications or any questions that you may have at the end. A little brief or abbreviated review of what really changed, the key updates that we heard from you from several informational meetings and discussions, is that you, you wanted to have good structure that provides staff good guidance, but at the same time, you wanted to balance with flexibility for the fact that we need to be able to address any changes that occur year over year and be able to adapt quickly, to be able to plan for the capital needs of the community. Some of the key updates were, is that you really expanded, in general, the type of projects that are included in your CIP. Another shift in the changes in your primary citizen engagement form, how you know what the community wants, is shifting to more of a strategic values and service needs assessment that's done every four years now, instead of every two years, and that's at a comprehensive survey. That doesn't mean that we're limiting you to that, the language speaks to, there are options. And other options would be, as you see here, public portal, the budget portal, and the public hearing, of course. The other one, as I mentioned, is the frequency of the survey, from a two-year to a four-year. The CIP update, that was another major change, is instead of updating it every two years, we've shifted it out to a major update every four years. It really looks at the policy, really majorly looks at the projects and your prioritization activity. And then we have a little mini check-in every two years, that really kind of updates and cleans up and assesses the feasibility of cost estimates and the language that the project concepts have. So check for any updates that do occur from changing circumstances, from one year to the next. And then, council, you had a discussion of really, how did you want to conduct your prioritization activities? And the language in the policy is open enough to be able to address how council's opinion from one prioritization year to the next might shift a little. So again, structure, but flexibility at the same time. And then, of course, one of the major things is, your policy went from just being debt-related items to really options, different types of funding options. So that opened the door to flexibility, and really helps us better plan for major community investments encompassing all aspects of potential funding opportunities, to really develop a usable funding model in the end, so we can put tangible assets on the ground. So at this time, I'll just open the floor to any questions or any direction for modifications.
Any questions for Courtney?
Oh, I was, could you bring up the ordinance?
I'll leave that open.
We'll be voting on this in two weeks.
Yeah, resolution, thank you. Go down if you could for, I think it was the, yeah.
Here.
Yeah, we, some of the criteria, did we have criteria in there?
Yes, sir.
I was just thinking that, after reviewing and after the work session, I was thinking that maybe add, maybe a partnership opportunities, something that kind of allows that, because we're talking about different funding, but, and then, so I was, you can, I'm flexible with the language, but something about partnership opportunities.
Leveraging funding.
Yeah.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that.
Funding sources, or alternate funding sources?
Hybrid.
Yeah. Everyone okay with adding something to that effect? Jeannie, is that clear, or what?
Leveraging funding is the most common nod that I seem to have witnessed, so does that adequately represent?
I think there's an element of partnering, or-
Non-town funding? Leveraging non-town funding?
Leveraging outside?
Or outside.
Leveraging other funding sources.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of grants.
I was thinking of partnership opportunities and whatever.
Okay.
Leveraging partnership and funding.
Okay. I will look at how the wording is with availability of funding, and see if there's ways to tweak and incorporate something there, and provide you at the next item some updated information. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Obviously, we heard it tonight with the Veterans Park. If suddenly there was adequate funding through private means, then that would probably-
Raise a priority, like in the spot.
Might go to a different pace than if it was up to the town funding. So I think that's a good point.
I also, you know, this says, criteria to gauge the merits of an individual project based on the following criteria. I would just not want to set up a scenario where just because there wasn't outside funding, that it would get a lower score.
It's almost like a bonus.
Yeah. But I think you get the idea. I just wouldn't, like, that project, I wouldn't want it penalized because there was no third-party source, for example.
I can play with the wording and the prioritization, or the project evaluation tool, and see if there's a way to incorporate that, and again, bring back some information and suggestions.
Ms. Ral, did you have any questions?
I just have one comment, not so much on the resolution, but just something that was brought up at the last work session, regarding state roadway projects that we would include in the CIP. Mayor Porton Johnson had brought up the fact that it was concerning that her, that given everything going on at the General Assembly, that if we had it in the CIP, that we would be committed, we'd be basically saying we're going to take that on. And, but what I'm hearing from Benjamin, if you could comment on this, by having significant DOT projects in the CIP, we also want to consider the fact that it's going to be used, maybe to our advantage, for scoring and things like that, as we go through the step and the process.
We've talked about that, and as we talked about last week at the work session, I think ultimately, there probably, there may very well be some, some very specific state road projects that the council may want to consider adding into their step, adding into their CIP to, you know, as we've talked about, to try and get, get the projects up to a point where maybe they can score better and get more state funding. But at this time, as we talked about last week, you know, staff's recommendation is to wait until we get through our road prioritization first, and then also, you know, look through, go through our transportation plan update process as well. So we're just, you know, at this point, the, we know we have a lot of needs on our state roads, but there is still really mushy. And so, and we don't have a good, you know, at this point, we haven't gone through the prioritization process to determine what the councils and the towns' priorities are on the state roads.
I do think it's important, after we do that prioritization process, maybe then we, as a council, can go back and identify which ones we would want in the CIP, because I think the long-term strategy needs to be that, I don't believe that the state is going to just come dump a bunch of money and we're just going to catch up on the road. So somehow, you know, the bummer is that we're not going to get reimbursed for that, with, there's no guarantee we're going to get our money back, or the taxpayers are going to get the money back. But that's a policy decision that we can make.
Right. And again, as mentioned last week, I mean, there's other, there's going to be other ways, too, that we'll be looking at handling state roads as we work on our prioritization process and budgeting and everything. So even if some, even if they maybe don't make it into the CIP, that's not to say that the town won't be putting money on some state roads. So we can, we doesn't have to be in the CIP in order to do that. But I think a lot, a lot more will come clear as we get through our prioritization process, and then start in and get through our transportation plan update process.
As you see here in the policy, the policy is trying to give you some flexibility, should council deem a particular state road project significant enough to warrant planning for it through this planning process with the capital investments plan. So I use the term "may" pretty heavily here. It's just flexibility, whereas before, we did not have that in the policy. Another area that really speaks to that would be your resources, is that our resources now encompass funding through other methods, which would be potentially state funding, or even including developer funding. So again, more to come on that. I think it's very important to wait for the prioritization, road prioritization discussion, to really see how you might want to tweak this in the future, if, or add projects.
And I appreciate the way you worded that, Jeannie, because I really honed in on that one bullet. And the fact that it started off with "may" helped me personally. You know, clearly, I've been a part of the council that has used town money on state roads, so I'm not opposed to that, where it's necessary and where we can leverage monies. My concern was that I don't want to open the floodgates and that it all be ours, because that's a burden that's not fair to the taxpayers of Moore's. So I appreciate the wording that you could admit.
This is very similar to some other jurisdictions, is how they choose to handle state roadways in North Carolina. As it is, the legislative is pushing more and more down to the local level, but they don't just put the full load of state projects on there. They consider it in their prioritization, or in telling staff what do they want in the pot of CIP projects. So that's where the conversation would potentially occur, and that's similar to other jurisdictions.
Okay, any other questions for Jeannie before we move on? Okay, we'll vote on this in two weeks. Any, you're open to email questions in advance? Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Next up will be Rodney Watkins, 2015-010, Resolution 15-101, Wake Tech Conditional Res zoning. Is this title correct?
Pardon?
Is this title correct? Res zoning CLI to CLI, or is there a-
It is, and I'll, I'll talk about that briefly in just a minute.
Between Watkins Road and Paramount Parkway. Take it away, Rodney. And there's a public hearing in two weeks on this.
Correct. As you stated, this is a rezoning request, requested by Wake Tech Community College. A couple of things really quickly before I get into it. A couple of new items came up at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, one being transit in, on the campus, proper, on the campus site, and then the other being the paving of Watkins Road. The transit, and please excuse my typo in my update, we have not met in the future. We met February 27th internally with staff and Wake Tech, to talk about those two items after the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the transit and Watkins Road. We have essentially, internally, addressed the transit request regarding the transit shelters and infrastructure with the revised condition number 15. All the red text is what we've revised it. And what it, what it essentially means that, with each phase that Wake Tech submits a plan as part of the campus, and they anticipate three phases, during each phase, we will look at the potential for transit stops, transit infrastructure, related to that particular phase. That way, that avoids development, and then placing a transit shelter where one's not necessarily needed. We will coordinate between Wake Tech, town staff, and the respective transit agency. We left it general because the transit agency may be Triangle Transit, it may be CAT, or it may be into some new entity. But we felt we've, we addressed the transit shelter item that was brought up with this revised condition 15. The second item we talked about was the paving of Watkins Road. That's a little more, it's a bigger, bigger item, and as we got, we talked about it further, we felt we needed to have DOT involved in those discussions, because that is the DOT road. We are, Benjamin's trying really hard to get up, get a meeting up with DOT. We have not yet secured a date. Once we do, we, once we do, we will update the briefing sheet on our discussion in the meeting and the resulting agreement. My hope is to have that meeting prior to the public hearing scheduled for the 24th. My hope is to have that meeting prior to the public hearing scheduled for the 24th. We're not certain that's going to happen yet, but we will have an update on the Watkins Road paving at a future meeting. Really quickly, Mayor, you mentioned the rezoning from OI to OI. The, a couple of things necessitated this. If you recall, in 2008, there were two rezonings that Wake Tech processed, two separate areas. Each of those rezonings had separate conditions. That's item number one. Item number two, they have since purchased additional property, Wake Tech, they have purchased additional property in that area to bring the total a little less than 94 acres. And that's number two. Number three, the UDO was adopted. So all those changes really necessitated the cleaning up of this property and consolidating the conditions, bringing them, bringing the, all the conditions consistent with the UDO and the current desires of the property owner, Wake Tech. That's why the request is from OI or conditional OI to conditional OI. It's a revision of the conditions. The property is posted. I have sent out the notices to the surrounding property owners for this, for this item. Again, it's seven properties, a little less than 94 acres, located between Paramount Parkway and Watkins Road at the intersection of NC 54. The land use plan designation is a combination of office and public and institutional. The proposed use, the college campus complies with that designation. The surrounding properties are all office and institutional, regional activity center, corridor commercial, and a variety of offices, apartments, and retail uses in the, in the adjacent properties. Several of the properties are already annexed within the town, however, although this, they will be exempt, there is a requirement to bring the rest of the remaining properties into the town limits as well. You'll notice as part of your packet, we did have a TIA. One thing to note with that TIA, it was more conceptual, big picture. The TIA looked at potential improvements, assuming the campus was built out, and what we could possibly expect at buildout. If you, as you look in the conditions, each phase that's submitted, there is also required detailed, very specific TIA to that particular phase. That is a condition that's carried over from 2008. So we will get more adept with each phase as each phase is submitted. And as I understand it, Phase 1 should be coming shortly after the rezoning if it's approved. The planning, this was discussed and Planning and Zoning Board did conduct a public comment session at their February meeting. The Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval subject to the 17 conditions and continuing discussions with Wake Tech regarding the two items, the transit shelters and infrastructure and the paving of Watkins Road. There's no impact on the Wake County school system since there's no residential units associated with this project. And the Planning and Zoning Board and staff do recommend approval subject to the 17 conditions, including revised condition number 15. And again, we are still continuing discussions with Wake Tech and NC DOT. I can certainly, backing up, a public hearing scheduled for the 24th with anticipated decision at the second meeting in April. I could certainly answer any questions that you may have, and there are representatives from Wake Tech here as well if I can't answer any of those. Any questions?
Any questions for Rodney?
I just have a quick question. The traffic impact analysis. NC 54 is a very significant road and it's one of the ways that we're going to get access to this site. Is there any interdependency with the NC 54 analysis that Benjamin mentioned earlier this evening and some of the impact analysis that was performed on this land? I mean, I'm not, I know there will be more traffic, but you know, chicken and the egg kind of thing. How do we look at that?
Sure, I'll let, I'll defer to Benjamin for the answer bit.
I'm assuming you're talking about the 54 Moore Corridor Study?
Right, because near that, near the site, there will be more intense traffic.
Right, right. And so the corridor study did take into account the, having the campus there and having the full buildout of the campus there. So that was included in their forecast. And then in Wake Tech's TIA, they do, you know, they, they show in this conceptual TIA looking at the full buildout, the effects on 54 from, from their development. They will be required, because they have frontage on 54, they will be required to make improvements on 54 along their frontage. So they will be pretty much, you know, close to four-laning 54 along a lot of their frontage. Some of those will be turn lanes, but they will be doing some fairly major improvements along 54. But their analysis does show in the 54 corridor study, I think, does show that more improvements will probably be needed in the future. However, a lot of those improvements are beyond their frontage.
So is the Wake Tech College an input into the NC 54 corridor study?
They are an input, yes. They were, their traffic, their buildout plan was included in the traffic forecast that the 54 study is based off of.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, go ahead.
There's a follow-up to that. So the way the TIA is done, it's going to be like after every phase, then they would TI analysis, you know?
Yeah.
Because my concern is, I mean, I think we're making progress with 54 in terms of the corridor study and feasibility study, but when the mayor and I met Secretary Teta a few years ago, he did bring up the fact that the, sometimes it may not be easy to realize that a major educational institution's coming here. And so I would only hope that we can make every effort to continue to communicate that to the DOT with whatever mechanisms and boards that we serve on so that we can perhaps accelerate it rather than just waiting. We could say, yeah, this is going to be built 10 years from now, but if we start seeing traffic really build up, maybe that's something the mayor, we can.
Well, if I could add to that, the Wake Transit Advisory Committee that I serve on, I talk about this site every meeting we go to. Because unless you are with Wake Tech or unless you are here in Mooresville, you may not know that it's even coming. So, and Benjamin is on top of this too.
So. And this section of 54 is in the, is in the draft step for being funded, for widening. I believe it's, it receives funding in 2023 or 2024 for construction.
So I meant they, this test on, you know, not, it's not under the development under the step, it got approved as a construction for the.
Yes, yeah, it does have, it has, it does have construction funding. It's in the later five years of the step, but it does have construction funding under this next 10-year step.
I just want it sooner, 2024.
So there's road improvements coming, there's transportation, alternate transportation opportunities coming, so I think it's on lots of radar.
And since the first phase of Wake Tech will be along the, the area fronting 54, those will be the first improvements that they'll have to do, and they are aware of that. So we will see 54 improvements with the first phase of Wake Tech.
All right. Any other questions for Rodney? Chris?
Quick question. The, the paving issue of Watkins Road. I take that it's not Rodney Watkins Road, just Watkins Road.
It is not.
No, really?
What happens in two months hypothetically if on April 28th, that issue isn't resolved? Without getting into the details of what the issue is, I read through the minutes, I'm not quite sure I understand exactly what it is, but I just want to be prepared. What if that is not resolved at that point? Sorry, that's a tough question.
We've been directed to have it get it resolved somehow. Even if it, it, maybe Wake Tech and staff aren't necessarily quite in agreement. We, we prepare something that then council considers and then we move on from there. I know Wake Tech is trying to meet a timeline. The rezonings on that timeline, I think the, then shortly thereafter, again, is the seminal of the Phase 1. So we fully intend to have this, have this addressed. Benjamin's made quite a bit of contact to NC DOT and they may be swamped with everything that's happened. They, they're very responsive typically and we fully expect to get, get to have a sit-down with them. Really quickly, the, the issue with Watkins is providing, as you may or may not know, it's, it's a dirt road from 54 currently out to almost Perimeter Park Drive. There's a little segment of paved area, but with the Phase 1, part of Watkins will be paved as well. So it's really connecting with ribbon pavement, which is just a shoulder, essentially two lanes of asphalt, connecting those two ends because we, everybody fully expects students to use Watkins at some point. Is it with Phase 1 or is it maybe later in the phases? That's, that's part of the issue that we still have to discuss and work out.
All right. I'd like that resolved before the 28th. Thanks.
I just had a couple. One last comment and we're going to move on. Okay, the, I like what staff tabled with this. I know it's rezoning. I like the standard you're setting. I hope we could enforce those across town every time we get something coming in a project. But, you know, this to me is great, the 17 conditions, things like that. And then I guess you answered about, I just had a question about Duke Medical Center. We're completing that early on, those stubs, right in Phase 1?
Yes, if you look on the phasing plan, it's much later in the document.
Okay, then that was the answer then?
It does look like it's connecting, it's, the condition is not specific, but it, it does look like it's going to be part of Phase 1, yes.
Okay. Because it was easier to do it then or you just, do you think you're going to get a lot of traffic going into that parking lot or?
Rodney, go back to condition six.
Yeah.
A second sentence. Priority issues.
Site that buts, then it's NC 54, so.
They're required to do that early.
Yes, the way, the way it reads and the way it's shown, it would be part of Phase 1, yes.
Okay, I mean, I put Watkins Road in front of that one, but that's just my thought. I'd rather have, but, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this, this particular condition is a carryover from the previous package of conditions that we had negotiated with the original rezoning. As, as most all of these conditions are, they're really a translation of what we negotiated previous.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rodney.
You're welcome.
And we'll have a public hearing in two weeks and vote on it at the end of April.
Right.
Next item is 2015-021, Annexation 15-02, voluntary annexation at 3045 and 3050 Carrington Mill Boulevard. These are the, AKA, Perimeter Park Apartments. Again, we have a public hearing in two weeks on this, Courtney.
That is correct. This is a voluntary annexation petition for the Carrington Park Apartments that we'll be discussing shortly. Under the new UDO, it's very specific requirements that an applicant, after receiving approval of a rezoning site plan, conceptual master plan, they're required to submit an annexation petition before they can submit any other applications. So we're going to start seeing them come in in a more expeditious manner than we have historically in the past, and that is why they did submit this. There is a action tonight, and that's for the resolution directing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and also setting the public hearing date, excuse me, for March 24th of this year. It is approximately 23 acres plus the associated right-of-way. It's for 3045 and 3050 Carrington Mill Boulevard. I'll pull the map up for you quickly. I'm here to obviously answer any questions that you do have regarding this annexation petition. We've also notified, since part of it is in Durham County, the Durham County Finance Department as required for our annexation service agreement. That was modified in August of last year. Any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Questions for Courtney?
Okay, if there are no questions, we do need a motion to direct a clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the annexation request. Is that right?
Well, in that case, I move that we adopt Resolution 2015-021B, which is the resolution you just described, directing the clerk to investigate the petition.
Second.
And set a date for the public hearing.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Anything else, Courtney?
Not on that, I don't miss it.
All right, very good, okay. Stay up there for a couple more. 2015-012, Perimeter Park Apartments Conceptual Master Plan. Again, the public hearing is at the, two weeks from tonight. Turn it back to Courtney.
And I did put together another presentation for you, because everybody loves visuals as well. I thought it'd help along with this process and give you just a little background on the application as well. This is the, a conceptual master plan, and since it is a new development application available under the UDO, I thought I'd just give a quick background overview on it. And what it does is it allows the applicant to prepare something similar to a sketch plan with just a little more information that allows council to take a look at it. And the council has the ability to approve it as submitted, to approve it subject to conditions, deny it, or if they find that there are deficiencies, you can remand it back to either the Planning Director or the Planning and Zoning Board to work with the applicant for some additional information. These are typically for larger projects that are on the scale, let's say Park West Village, but they can be used for a variety of other applications. And we'll probably see them also used in conjunction with some rezonings for different projects. The two things that are a little bit different about this is, one, the approval period is for five years, which is longer than most development applications, and it allows any future site plans or subdivisions submitted within that master plan area to be approved by staff. So for example, traditionally, if a property is owned appropriately, any residential development over 50 units comes to council. Let's say somebody came through with a conceptual master plan, had townhomes, apartments, and single-family detached, they got approval for that, they then have to, can go through and get all those applications submitted and reviewed and approved by staff, even though there's over 1,000 units saved for each one hypothetically. So that's one of the advantages to this process. When reviewing it, staff will take a look at, there are seven different criteria. I'm not going to really go into those. I've shortened the version on the presentation. The actual text pulled from the code is actually in your briefing sheet, but we're really looking to see if they're consistent with what's around it, consistent with what's in the zoning district. We're taking a look, you know, at their infrastructure system, transportation, generally, will it work within the framework, framework of what's permitted within the UDO as the TAC carry standards, as well as our EDCM, which is our Engineering Design and Construction Manual. We'll take a look, you know, is the general stormwater information they have on there? Do we think it's going to be sufficient? We are going to take a look at their open space requirements, and if you get really into the weeds, they are required to identify their true preservation areas as well. We're going to take a look again with the arrangement of the development to make sure that's fairly consistent with the different standards set forth in the UDO. This request, again, is to approve a conceptual master plan, and it's currently owned by Duke Realty, and I've outlined the entire site here. The county line, and we're probably going to talk about this a little more, cuts through the middle of the site, and we'll have a different, additional image that looks at that a little more detail, but you'll see the site does have access office later as well as Carrington Mill Boulevard. The applicant is Davis Development. Overall, the site is 30, over 30 acres, and that does include the portion on both sides of Carrington Mill. They are proposing between 250 and 275 units. There are parameters from how they can, you know, modify that within the UDO, so they did provide a general range. did provide a general range. That brings their total density, or net density, I should say, between about 12, 13 units an acre, which is under the maximum permitted by right of 17 dwelling units an acre. They are proposing 13 acres of open space, which is the twice the amount required of six acres. They are preserving a little over four acres of trees, which exceeds slightly the minimum that's required. Based off their general layout, they do meet the setback requirements. They haven't provided any buildings. They're not required at this point, but they would need to stay under the 75-foot height requirement. The land use designation for this area is MDR, but it is zoned high-density residential. They propose use, again, as multifamily, and the surrounding uses to the south is the Perimeter Park Office Park, and there are some existing older single-family homes along Slater, as well as a fair amount of vacant land in that area. They are not proposing any additional impacts to the floodplain, the stream that loca, that's located along the southern boundary of the site, and again, they submitted their voluntary annexation petition. Conceptual master plan. This basically covers what's included in the conceptual master plan. The county line that we're familiar with runs through, I'm just kinda drawing a line through most of the buildings. Again, it's gonna all be located in our limits, so all taxes, jurisdictional, for Morseville will be received, but part of them will go to the county of Durham and part will go to Wake County as well. The public impact, there's a couple of different potential impacts. I have reached out to Durham County more than once. I still have not been able to obtain their ratios that they use to predict students. So while part of this site would go to Durham schools and part would go to Wake County schools, I only have a calculated four-week county, so based off of their generation rate, this apartment complex would generate between 50 to 55 new students from K through 12. Other potential impacts is they are going to have to create special voting districts for this because people will be voting for Morseville municipal elections, and sometimes Durham elections and sometimes Wake County elections, depending on which unit they are within each building. It's not gonna have a major impact on taxes simply because it is commercial in nature, so all taxes are paid by the property owner, so that's less of a concern. And there's other accounting services such as social service type things, and that may be a little confusing as well. But that is just the, kind of the general information available. I have it. In the public, excuse me, the planning and zoning board, they did recommend approval of the proposed conceptual master plan, and they also would like the applicant to extend water and sewer services to the lane parcel. That's an existing home that's located at 3109 Slater Road. I can tell you they will be extending water sewer services as required per the regulations set forth in Cary. It's palintery in nature, so I don't know where those lines will reach that particular property. But once we start developing, I'll have a better idea of whether or not the lanes will even have access. And the staff's recommendation is to approve the conceptual master plan as proposed, subject to two conditions. The first condition is that they make a payment in lieu of $9,750. That is their proportion of a future signal at Airport and Slater based off their TIA. Staff is recommending that. Staff is also recommending that the applicant build suburban road, which was the sliver that was coming off of Slater Road, to town standards. However, it is a driveway that is serving their site only, so the town will not be accepting maintenance of what will function as a private driveway to a multifamily commercial site, consistent with how we treat every other multifamily jurisdiction, or multifamily development out there. So there is a condition reflecting that. This has been noticed in the paper, on the website, email blast, we've posted the property. There's a public comment session as well as the public hearing that will be held at the next meeting. I'm here to answer any questions you have. The applicant is also in attendance, so if there's any questions that they can answer for you, they're happy to do so.
Courtney, I just had a couple of clarification questions. The earlier briefing we had about a light signal at the hotel, we tried to keep it general. We didn't pick an intersection. This one, we're picking an intersection. Should we also make this one a general payment in lieu to signal on Airport Boulevard and leave it at that?
We can.
I'm just saying to be consistent with what we are gonna vote on, on another similar project.
Certainly. The reason why, our rules are a little bit different in the old zoning ordinance and the new zoning ordinance, and under the new code, it's pretty clear we have to take a look at the TIA and they're responsible for their impacts associated with that. And that's why we're that specific, cause we're trying to match up to the language in the UDO. Whereas under the old zoning ordinance, it wasn't quite as rigid as it is now, but it's, you know, if you feel as if the condition should be less specific, you can do so.
Well, it wouldn't hurt us. It would give us the flexibility to put, put it there if we wanted, but if there was a need somewhere else, then we could use it there.
Yes, sir.
And the other question, maybe it's to Frank. How does this, if the local bill we have that's working its way through the General Assembly passes, how does that affect the timing of this?
It's a good question. I don't think we have the authority until we have the authority.
Okay.
So.
But this is, when, when does the grandfathering clock start? At the time we vote on this? The day, the night it's approved? And it would be grandfathered in to whatever was the rule at that time?
Well, they still have the site plan approval too, that they have to go there. They haven't submitted that application.
I guess, maybe it requires a little more investigating, but it would be nice to know the timing and how that will all work out, cause it seems like it's gonna be.
This is still conceptual.
Yeah.
As Courtney points out, you don't really have a fixed site plan with number of units and doing the calculation until there's a site plan, so let us confer on that.
That's fine. All right. Steve?
It may be early to ask, but when, as we see this plan unfold, medium density, you know, would it be sort of like, would it be like a Kit Creek kind of development, close, that dense? I mean, how dense are we talking, or does it just depend on?
These are garden apartments.
Apartments. Okay. So it's denser. Okay.
Michael?
Okay. Let's see. This is concept, this is the first one, right? We've seen conceptual wise, and then if we approve it, it just goes on to you. You guys do it internally, staff?
Yes, sir.
Are there any internal greenways to this project? Like, have we seen in other apartment complexes?
There, if they were to build something, it would be for themselves. They don't have any specific greenways that head up this direction for our Parks and Greenway master plan.
So, right, so there's nothing that they can connect to, or, other than a street and a sidewalk, to get to our greenways?
That is correct.
I mean, I know, go ahead.
Yeah, they have a wider sidewalk. Let me just look. It's, it's not quite that level, D will tell, but my memory is that they have a wider sidewalk that will be required along Slater, so I think there's like a multi-use path that maybe runs along Slater. That's part, but, you know, let me look at that specifically versus me trying to go off my memory and get you a very specific answer.
Park West Village, they, they have internal greenways. Did they choose to do that, or was that a requirement because of the way they plotted?
That's part of our greenway system, and it was required, if I remember.
So I was just wondering how close, the closest greenway to this complex are, greenway would be for them to walk, to get to?
Michael, I would think with their proximity, I mean, their, their audience is Perimeter Park, so I would think that they'd probably go out of their way to make sure that it's a nice commute by foot between this apartment and Perimeter Park. So they'll, I think this is where the market will probably.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah. To take it. So. Anything else?
Yeah. The, how did, the tree ordinance, you, you haven't looked at it yet because of, you haven't got down to the detail of this. I mean, I was just wondering how the feedback on that came.
They actually did have to prepare the tree ordinance for this, prepare plans in accordance to the recently adopted tree ordinance. Let me rephrase that. They, they submitted under the old, but they switched midway once it was adopted. They are preserving this area, basically down in here, as well as this little darker area.
So it seems to be working from staff point of view and from their developer point of view, that ordinance?
I think there's some revisions that need to be made, but it's, it's working.
Okay.
Well enough.
Good. Few more questions. The, the idea of this suburban road, it's a gravel road, so there, our standard, Morseville town standard would make it a paved road?
Yeah, it's a paved private road. So if you think of the private roads that run through Park West Village.
Right. But I guess the key is right now, it's, it's a gravel road, and we're saying we want it to Morseville standards, which is a paved standard.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's clarification compared to other projects. And then the Sorrel Grove Church Road. Could you show me where that, is that, that's the one, where's that one on this?
Well, here's Slater. Sorrel Grove Church Road is gonna be down off this site. Let me see if it's in the.
Cause that came up in the TIA and, right? That's not a dirt gravel road, is it?
Sorrel Grove Church Road?
Yeah.
No, it's a paved road.
Okay. But DOT, you said in the notes that DOT didn't want, did not support it, road improvements to that?
I'm gonna have to have Benjamin answer any transportation specifics since he reviews the TIAs.
I was just wondering why they didn't want approval of improvements to that road.
For, it was specific to the intersection of Sorrel Grove Church Road and Slater Road and Copley Parkway. It's Sorrel Grove Church Road on the south, Copley Parkway on the north, and Slater runs between it. Currently, this, there's stop signs on Sorrel Grove Church Road and on Sorrel, and on Copley Parkway. In the analysis, the, the main issues, the, the only improvements that the engineers, that the traffic engineer who did the analysis and our consultant agreed, that really could be done would be to four, would be to convert that intersection to a four-way stop intersection and do some restriping. DOT did not agree with that because, one, it's an offset intersection, and so it'd be, if you converted it to four-way stop, it'd be, some of the site distances would be really poor, and with the restriping that they recommended, it would actually create an offset lane on Slater Road going from the airport towards this site. So they would be restriping one lane to be a left turn lane, the, and so the, what would be restriped as the straight through lane would end up going directly into a dedicated right turn lane across intersection. DOT said that's not a safe movement, and so they, they did not agree with those improvements. There is also, those improvements are also recommended because the traffic engineer doing the study found a crash history, although DOT, when they reviewed it, they did not agree that that crash history was there. So based on those conversations, we, you know, since Slater Road and Sorrel Grove Church Road are both state roadways, we had to go back and, and do what DOT wanted, which was leave it as is. DOT feels it's a safe intersection as it is, and the impacts, the primary impacts of the intersection are still three movements on Slater Road, so it's not, there, there's not a whole lot of turning movements that this development would add.
Good. Couple more questions then, Courtney. The, the homeowner, or the, the lanes, I think it was referred to, or whoever lives over there, and they have the water, they would like to have water connection done? Are they in the town, city limits, or are they outside?
I don't know, but let's just say you could connect. They would have to then submit a voluntary annexation petition.
Right.
To connect.
Right. Cause we have a policy, we've kind of been, councils have been through this before with other, okay. And then, in the past, I've seen where we put, where the kids were gonna go to school at? Do we know, I mean, assuming there are kids? I know you've, you've done your due diligence with Durham County, but where would they go to school in Wake County? Cause I'm, just have questions concerning residents that are being displaced, because...
I queried some of the lots near there, and I wasn't able to get a good gauge. Historically, what I do is I take a look at the most recent, you know, assignment policy that they have.
Right.
Type in a couple addresses and try to see where they may go.
Right.
I wasn't able to get any really good answers from that, so in lieu of putting potentially incorrect information in there, I just left the numbers that would be generated. I mean, I have seen, I mean, every year I get a little bit something different. You know, they could go over to Bar Creek, you know, they could come down.
Biddy Creek.
It's just, it's, you know, and I don't know where they would end up going. I mean, they could come to one in Morseville, they could go to one in Cary, they could go to one in Raleigh.
Right. Now, if some, where would you put that as far as one of the, you, your last slide listed as a concern, impact, possible impact? Where would you list that as one of the six findings, or would you?
Well, there's no findings necessarily with this. There's seven requirements that you, that they have to meet.
Right.
And they've met those. But what I tried to do is in the briefing sheet, they have, there's this other thing about other, kind of the other options or other things that could come into play, and that's where I pulled that in. And really what generated the whole entire conversation is I contacted both Durham and Wake County, trying to prepare myself to appropriately answer the questions from both the planning and zoning board, as well as town council of where would they go to school? You know, how would they vote? You know, all of those answers, cause I have more than one project that has a similar situation that was in review at the time. And so I was just trying to prepare myself with as much information as possible, and that's what really led to some of the, you know, the letters being generated.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. I find it interesting, this split between the two counties and, you know, where do they vote? Who, what police department do they call? It looks like there'd be a possibility that apartments themselves would be in two counties, so is that, how do we address that, down to that, that level of detail? Is there any swap between us and Durham? Have we talked to them about? Go ahead and give us, you know, annex this land all into Morseville or something? I mean.
Well, we are annexing it all into Morseville. So police is 100% Morseville.
So it's just the county services?
It's the county level services, which are several of your social services. You think about, you know, some of the transportation, but I think those are nominal, it's a few dollars a ride. You know, I think you'd figure it out. I don't think that's a major impact. Where it gets a little more tricky is when you vote, especially if, say there's two, you know, two students are attending Wake Tech. They're both over 18, one has a bedroom in Wake County, the other one has a bedroom in Durham County, and they're in the same unit. They will each have different precincts that they vote in. They both are going to vote for, you know, council here, but they're gonna, you know, there's one that's gonna vote for Wake County Commissioners, and there's one that's gonna vote for Durham County.
Would you have, students own the same apartment?
Even in the same apartment.
Two kids, you know, brother and sister going to two different schools because.
And what I have not been able to get the answer is how they're gonna handle the schools. They have historically handled schools. There's a couple examples in the Youngsville area where you have part, I guess it's Franklin County and part, horrible counties. There's two different counties. And they base it off the master bedroom. So regardless of where that count, you know, master bedroom, or the child was, if that master bedroom was in Wake County, they went to Wake County Public Schools. They run into Johnson County as well. So you literally can have kids, same block, that will actually go to two separate schools. Next-door neighbors could go to two separate schools.
And do we ever, do the counties ever swap to, to fix issues like this?
No.
Anyone know?
I would say no, is the short answer.
I don't think they can.
That's fine.
How hard would it be to investigate that?
I mean, it would take an act of the legislature to change a county boundary line. I just don't see that happening. Now, you may have an inter-county agreement as to who may serve what with which police department or which sheriff's department, but.
And I think it, it may not be ours to, to me, it'd be more of a marketing issue for this, for this complex, to be honest with you, that it would be an issue that they're gonna have to deal with all the time, and maybe they'd wanna pursue that.
And, and I think that's, that was part of the concern, that the finance department of Wake County. Now, if a single-family home, person's confused at first after they buy it, they get their clarity, they're typically there for a period of time. Now, with rental units, you have multiple units that are constantly turning over. units, you have multiple units that are constantly turning over. Apartments are always sold to another apartment entity. I mean, there's this constant state of change. I mean, that's what apartments typically, at least in, you know, our area, it's the trend. So I think that was more of the concern is, you know, you have one leasing agent that will provide that information, leasing agent leaves, new leasing agent doesn't provide all the, quite the same information. The base, once they have established who does what, where, it's set. You know, it's just whether or not the leasing agent clearly communicates that information.
But this makes it even more, you know, at least, at least a single family or a townhouse owner has a property tax bill that they can refer to to clarify where they really live. Here, it is going to be a mess.
And frankly, we can answer that question, too. So if we have somebody that buys a house that splits jurisdiction, we can look it up, and we can clearly answer that, you know, based off the information that's provided. When it gets down to the multifamily units, this can be more difficult. You know, we don't have floor-by-floor plans, we don't know which unit is which. So it is always really going to be up to the leasing agent to clearly communicate that, or at least make sure they're putting in the appropriate units, you know, if they have specific desires.
Just offer one thing. I would say Courtney is very capable and answers 99 of 100 questions, but I would suspect, I mean, you haven't heard from the applicant. I suspect they have thought through this, or they wouldn't get to this point. I mean, either they want to hear from them tonight, or wait until next meeting to hear what, how they plan to address this. I'm sure they must.
I guess, I guess.
How they're going to deal with it.
Ask the applicant, next, next meeting, if you could address some of these things that we've talked about. Maybe we're all just confused. We, we have similar with single-family, Kits Creek. We have single-family going in as Durham County, but it's Mooresville.
It's, every single resident, every single home in Kits Creek that has been approved to date, and they are all, the home itself is 100% in Wake County.
Right.
You have a few where their alley is running, actually, and some of the buffer is running in Durham, and so they have a land bill that they have to pay, but the structure itself.
How about the new section? Don't they have new property that they're going to build on eventually that will be in Durham County?
Yeah. I mean, I am currently reviewing future phases of Kits Creek.
Okay.
And same comment has been provided to them, you know.
Okay. I mean, it happens elsewhere. I think Cary has it in Chanham County.
And there is nothing in the UDA that prohibits them from doing it.
So Courtney, well, does the applicant want to talk tonight to us about anything? I'm not, we're not requesting it, but there's something you want to add while we're talking on this? If you could just introduce yourself, and then.
Great. Good evening. Michael Birch with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant, Davis Development, Inc. And so I do want to just speak to, to the issue of the split county line. So I think a couple of council members have touched on this, really being a, a leasing issue. You know, from a municipal services standpoint, all of this property will be annexed by the town, so police, fire, or town services. With regard to EMS, my understanding is there are local agreements in place that will cover those emergency services as well. With regard to property taxes, you know, Durham will assess for the portion of the land and the building within their county jurisdiction. Wake County will do the same for the portion within their jurisdiction. It is going to one entity, which is the owner of the complex. With regard, so the, the other two are voting and school assignment. It's our understanding as well that school assignment is handled by location of the master bedroom. And then voting is, again, for, all of those issues have answers. There are base rules in place from a state statute standpoint. So it's not as if these are questions without answers. There are base rules in place to handle each of these. And as it's been mentioned, it is up to the complex owner, from a leasing standpoint, to inform their occupants as to what those rules are. You know, you compare it to the single-family context. On the apartment complex, you have, you know, there aren't really any subleases, so each new tenant is coming through the leasing officer of that complex. And so that's going to be a discussion with each new tenant. And I believe it was also touched on from a site plan standard standpoint, you know, this is not kind of encompassed or addressed by one of the seven, one of the seven standards, but it is something, you know, from Davis Development's standpoint, that they will continue to work with Marcus Kenraid in Wake County, and I believe it's Kim Simpson in Durham County on those issues as they move forward. Again, you've got a conceptual plan before you. There will be further refinements at the final site plan and building permit level. But I would say there are, and we can, we'll get into this at the public hearing in two weeks, there are topographical easement, other site features that are driving building location. So we're trying to, this is an issue that, that Davis knew about from, from day one in terms of the county line splitting the site, one they've been aware of and have tried to work with as much as they can, given the other site constraints. So, but I would just say there, there are answers to each of these questions. So, thank you.
And you will, of course, charge a Mooresville premium for those apartments?
I believe they've already factored that.
Okay, all right. All right. Mr. Colley?
Mr. Birch, thank you. I was just wondering, we sort of haven't gotten a real, is it possible to, if both counties are amenable, I think this council might also be amenable to some kind of just moving that line?
Right. Mr. Gray mentioned that's a legislative act. I know just personally, on a separate project, but between, this is actually a jurisdictional, I believe it was Durham County and City of Raleigh, or City of Durham, City of Raleigh, we changed the municipal boundaries. But again, that's a legislative act that, that requires a general assembly action.
And that's like a local bill that we're sort of already moving through?
That is, that is a local bill.
I think we have a delegation that'd be happy to help us with that.
I think this is very complex, and I, there's a lack of transparency about where the line is possibly. There's more transparency in single-family homes because you have publicly available data on that property. But when you have a, a complex or a townhome series, there's less clarity on where those lines are. Where the master bedroom is, it's not publicly available, at least, and with the county lines, it just seems very confusing.
We're not going to know where the buildings are.
Right. We will not know.
Ultimately. So I think that's.
That, that's something on the back end that's dealt with, with the school system. So the school system, from an assignment standpoint, knows which bedrooms they're dealing with. From a voting precinct, they, they know. So from a standpoint of, there is knowledge on the public side as to what.
And that goes to the, also the voting.
Right.
Well, I would just, if we can move the county line to your property line, that's the answer. We, we make the problem go away if all parties are amenable to it, although the timing might be too late for a local bill.
I think certainly for, for this session.
Yeah.
It is. They're, they're not going to know where the buildings are. They, they don't.
It doesn't matter if we just move the line to the property line.
I mean, you, you inject an uncertainty and a complexity with trying to pursue legislation that doesn't dovetail very well with trying to transact a development project. So I would just be cogn, you know, cognizant of that.
Okay. I guess, I'm going to ask anyway. I, I guess there was no way to design some of these buildings so that maybe the breezeway or the walkway would be on the county line, so at least the units themselves would be wholly within one county?
Right. And so because this is a conceptual master plan, they haven't gotten to the detail of where the actual units are. I mean, they have an understanding of how the building lays out. But as they go to the final site plan and actual building permit, they'll have a much more clear understanding. And again, given this is conceptual, there will be further refinements and, but right at this time, there's.
Yeah. I feel, I, I, I'm kind of concerned about the schools and the voting, too. And I, in a perfect world, it may be that the buildings themselves split counties, but the, the entire unit is within just one county. You don't have to worry about what bedroom you're staying in. Courtney, the, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended the, that the water and sewer run the full length of suburban road, and I didn't quite hear what you said about that line.
The Planning and Zoning Board wanted to make sure that the lanes had access to water and sewer connections. I know, and Mr. Zewald's going to have to answer it more detail, about the location of a water and sewer line. I think there was some thought based off of existing conditions, that there was some possibility. He can probably speak to that at the public hearing.
Okay.
Or now, if you desire.
Okay. That's fine, next time. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah. And unfortunately, I mean, there's some clear parameters, but they haven't designed it out to fully.
Right. Okay.
I just have one comment on the schools thing. Just, I just think one thing that concerns me is, there's really no way of knowing whether we're accurately forecasting how many students are coming in, you know. And so I know this says 50, 55 students, but I know that Cary's been looking at some of the impact on their school system. So maybe that's something we can bring up with the school board, or I know we're talking about doing a joint meeting with them eventually, or just, because we just don't know how, when these apartments are coming in, how many people are coming in with kids.
And it is a county-wide demographic, too.
Yeah.
So it's not, you know, what happens in one part of the county with regards to occupancy rates, you know, for children, is not necessarily the same as what's actually happening here in Mooresville. And even if you look at the different complexes, I mean, I can tell you that I see the rate of the number of children that I see, it seems to fluctuate of whether or not they are actively marking towards furnished, you know, corporate apartments, you know, what the rent rates are. I mean, there's just so many factors, you know, that come into play. It's, it's a best guess that Wake County uses based off of county-wide data that they have.
Okay. We have, Colley?
Yeah, I had a question about the, the signal figures. $130,000 total, plus the 50%. And we're looking for a PIL of 9,750. Have we already collected some more of that 130 from other properties to date?
We have collected money for signals along Airport, but what I don't remember off the top of my head is whether or not they were restricted to a particular intersection, or if the condition allowed it to be anywhere along Airport. So we don't, we'll have to do some digging to get you that exact answer.
Okay. Because if they're only contributing a little bit, because one of these is, the strata's going to break the camel's back, and we're going to need the signal. And we may or may not have received very much money for the signal. Like, this is a very small amount. It's sort of, whatever we can do to make sure that these kinds of PILs actually match up to our eventual need. I know it's hard because some of the development's already done before PILs are happening or something. Because that's going to come out of our budget. Thank you.
Just a couple comments for the applicant. Okay. And then we're going to wrap this one up after your comments. It'd be helpful for me to understand this first conceptual master plan we've run across, but kind of the quality you're trying to convey. I think that would help alleviate maybe some fears about who you're attracting. Are they, is it corporate clients? Is it family clients? I've seen some of this other stuff across town, and I'm always interested in quality, the quality product. They are. They're, they're building elevations, and they're.
And the building elevations are not a required element of a conceptual master plan, so they're not included.
Aren't they in there? What are they? I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I'm supposed, right. But I'm looking at, in the past, we've looked at like building materials sometimes.
They have to meet, as part of the UDO. The UDO does require apartments to meet the same standards as every other commercial structure. So they have to be 75% masonry, just like every other new commercial building that's being.
What I'm referring to, maybe they want to show us that they're doing some upgrades somewhere, whatever, stuff like that. People in the past have come before us and done stuff like that. Granite countertops with clientele, underground parking, stuff like that. Less parking, see a parking. Thank you. That was it. Okay. Courtney, thank you very much for that update. And again, we'll have a public hearing in two weeks and vote on it.
Can we just get a copy of the presentation, please, Courtney?
Next item is 2015-002 Unified Development Ordinance Amendment. Courtney, you're up for this one, too?
I am. Okay. Before you do, have a proposed text amendment. It is a fairly significant text amendment with regards to volume. It's less significant with regards to some of the changes that are being made. But there's really four categories of changes. One is we, at the time when this was drafted, and even when it was in the draft form from the Planning and Zoning Board, any applicants that we have received that were reasonable, which happened to be every single one of them, have been reflected in here. The next was to clarify any inquiries. For example, we would have somebody call us and say, can you explain to me what exactly this means? We realized that the text may have been a little ambiguous, so we've gone through and clarified that. Again, it's a response to the customer's request, or inquiries. Next is the restate legislation, and that was enacted. And so to make sure that we're following the law, we have several changes in there. And the last is just that standard typographical cleanup that you'll see every single time I talk about text amendments. What I've done is, if you look at the actual briefing sheet itself, I have each item listed, I think it's one through 40-something, and then there's specific bullets underneath those. If you see items in bold, those are really more of a significant change. It's actually changing the context of the code. If you see one that's not bold, it's really more of a typographical administrative type change, and it's really less important in the big scheme of things. Furthermore, I talked about the four reasons. So what I've done is, for this presentation, is I've taken each item. So if you look at one here on my list, it's going to correspond to the number one on your briefing sheet. And then I'll talk about the bullets a little more in detail. And then I've identified what category they fall into here, too. Some will fall into multiple categories. And also, some of the general revisions, most of them, I should say, are as a result of a change that I made to address the state statute, or as I made one change, inevitably I had to make other changes. And those I just put into this general revision category. But the first one, item number one, regarding the application's submittal process, this is some changes required with the state statute, and it clarifies what constitutes a submittal, as well as clarifies how an application can be revised once it's accepted for review. The next item is the special use permit. Under the Regulatory Reform Act, they do require that we have fracking as part of that. We are proposing putting that as a special use permit. The change that we added here states that if any permit issued by a state or federal agency is revoked, expires, your associated special use permit issued by the town is also revoked or expires. Moving on to item number three, subdivision approvals, there is, what was actually stated in the presentations that I made to you, and what actually was reflected in the text, didn't match. So I've clarified it, that it is 50 or more lots that the council approves. Moving on to item number four, for the site plan approval, it changes terminology from building height to structure height. That is consistent with definitions in the new UDO. Item number five, again, it's the building and the structure comment I just made. And it also changes in the planned development district, gross density to net density. Since we use net density as our calculator for every other zoning district in Mooresville, we wanted to make sure this was consistent with that. Next, we have the town center.
Hang on a second. So we've got 45 of these? Do you want us to give you this little thumbnail, or do you want to just pick out ones that you? you'd like to ask Courtney about?
Honestly, I think we're going to glaze over if you go through 45 of these.
Okay.
So, um, if there's something in particular you want to talk about, uh, pleasure.
Can I, can I ask something?
Sure.
Besides the, the, the special use permit, which is very different in, in, uh, in addition, are the others out of sync with what we were hoping for, what we, as a council, um, what our goal was, what we were aiming for? Are there any better, that you'd put in that category with the fracking special use permit?
Um, not that I can think of.
Okay.
I mean, fracking really is the biggest change. I mean, we specifically prohibited it, and now we have to require it.
Right, and we have to require it, and that's important, right. But the rest of these, we're all kind of in, in line with what we, what our goal was as we went through this whole process? Okay, thank you.
Courtney, are there any, any that you would like to point out as, uh, needing a special, uh, mention or comment?
Uh, the only other quick items, uh, that we've added is C B U. Um, those are those cluster box units that are required by the postal system. Um, you know, postal system will no longer pick up at individual houses. Instead, you have to have cluster box units, so providing standards that are very similar to what Kerry adopted, um, are put in here. Um, that's kind of another, um, change. Um, we've addressed, uh, issues specific to requests from Park West Village, some from Sheets, some from our fire department. I mean, this really is a customer service-driven text amendment minus the state statute requirements.
The Sheets issue was resolved?
It is. They have an attachment that they're happy with it's drafted.
How was that resolved? That was the only question I had.
Um, we made changes to probably 15 different sections of the text. Um, they're allowed to put signs on their canopy. Um, so I, I don't want to go into too much detail because it involves a special use permit, uh, so that's just kind of my quick answer.
Chris?
I wanted to thank the Planning and Zoning Board for really doing the heavy lifting on a lot of this, because, uh, I couldn't make the meeting, but I read through the minutes, and they, um, really put a lot of time into this. And we have two of our members here tonight with Peter and Craig, so thank you all, and I hope you'll extend our thanks to the full, uh, board, too.
I'll do.
Courtney?
I just had some concerns about the hydraulic fracking, and I know I was going through the minutes, reading some of the things that Michael Roberts had said about the distance and things like that. Is, is that something that's going to be a special use permit coming back to this board? It just was, it's state law now, right? I mean, my, my concern is the environmental consequences of the homes.
Certainly, we have to require it, and the parameters for which we require have to be similar to other uses. So the extraction use that we had already permitted, it's very similar. It really gets more from safety and from the standpoint of travel, transportation safety. Um, we did not delve into, um, water quality, you know, we didn't delve into land subsidence, um, you know, things that can occur. Um, you know, talking noise, a lot of that is handled under our existing noise standards. Um, I have it on my to-do list to go back and see potentially how Pennsylvania handles safety, because at the end of the day, I don't know if it's a U D O related item or a code of ordinance related item. Um, but it's going to take some time for me to go back and take a look and research it. Um, you know, but for the interest of time, Planning and Zoning Board recommended go ahead in doing this, so at least we're consistent with our statutory requirements.
Okay. So I would say we have an opportunity, if you, you know, can study this a little bit more, if you have any questions, uh, shoot them over to Courtney. Uh, there'll be a public hearing in two weeks on this. Uh, anything else before we move on? Excellent. Okay. Um, Rich, you're up for the next one, right? This is an item that was moved from the consent agenda, uh, 2015 dash zero two five Carrington Mill Boulevard Street acceptance. Um, you're going to brief us tonight. I don't have an action date at this point, so...
I believe the action date for, of next meeting, the 24th, uh, should work out. Uh, essentially, we were hoping that, uh, there's a couple cleanup items on, uh, the roadwork, uh, that needed to be completed. Uh, I'm sure you're all aware that we've had a little bit of a weather issue over the last several weeks, so they've been a little bit delayed in completing those. They should be out there this week, uh, finishing up most of them. Uh, next week, there actually will be a period of time where heading eastbound on the Carrington Mill portion from the roundabout out to Slater will be closed down for a day or two. Uh, I can get some information out, and I'll, I'll work with the P I O to get, uh, that out to everybody, for them to finish up the final stuff that they need to do. But, uh, other than that, the road has been, uh, inspected by town staff, uh, throughout. They've got us all the documentation we need. Uh, the initial request to expedite the approval, uh, there's a small transaction going on with the applicant at the end of the month, so, uh, we're trying to close out a few things with them before faces change, and we have to re-educate some of the, uh, the new company that will be associated with these projects. So, uh, in terms of the road, there are provisions in the, uh, ordinance that they will have a one-year warranty period that will include hidden defects as well as any damage from ongoing construction traffic, so, uh, we feel we're pretty much covered from that respect.
And, and you addressed the point I was going to bring up, a, a public comment about, uh, here we are about to accept these roads, and then here we are about to have a huge apartment complex built right around the corner from them. It doesn't seem to jive. It, it seems like maybe, uh, we'd want to wait, or, um, or, or, I guess another solution, is there any way to keep the construction traffic for future Slater Road off this road?
We can discuss that, uh, discuss that with that applicant at the time. It is two separate entities that will be doing the development, so that is another consideration that we will have to take in that, uh, the current, uh, developer of the road, uh, being responsible for somebody else's damage. Um, it wouldn't be uncommon for this, uh, typical with other, some other subdivisions that have been built in phases where we've accepted the roads earlier on, uh, while other phases were being, uh, completed still.
Right. Okay.
Would there be any interest in possible postponing the acceptance?
I guess that's the other question, is what, what's driving us to accept it now versus, uh, a year from now, or...
The road is complete. Uh, this is typically what we would do. We do have the opportunity, it's a minimum of a one-year, uh, warranty period, so we do have the opportunity to extend that out further, uh, if that's what you wish.
Maybe like one year after the construction traffic is done?
Well, I guess it'd be...
Because that's meeting the same, from our side.
Be hard to dictate when that might happen. I mean, that's out of our, that's out of their hands. Certainly, maybe there's an extension that can be worked out. Uh, Tony, you're about...
There's going to be a lot of construction on the road. It's not just the one, this one project.
Right, within perimeter park, they're going to be...
We're, we're accepting the roads a little bit typically, do. The roads are built to our standards. We feel like their standards are, are, are pretty sufficient.
Robust, yeah.
And so to deviate, and again, you're injecting inconsistency into the process. So they've met their requirements, they're making the repairs, we have a one-year warranty on, on, on the project. And it's not just going to be this one project that's going to have construction, so to delay it or try to tie it to the apartment complex, I think is kind of stretching it a little bit.
Yeah, I agree with staff's assessment.
How about the notion of an ext, uh, extended warranty? I mean, because they're, you know, they're kind of feeding off these other projects. I mean, you'd think that they'd, um, I guess, is it worth asking that?
I certainly, I certainly discuss that.
Is council okay with that, uh, request, maybe? See if we can get a longer than a one-year warranty out of it, so. Okay. All right. Appreciate it.
I'll do that.
All right. Anything else? Rich? Rich is leaving? Okay.
Run! Yeah, hurry up!
All right. Um, that's it for the new items. Uh, we have a consent agenda item, 2015 dash zero two six. Um, Frank, do we need to suspend the rules to brief an action on it in one night, or is this...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Again, it's your rules.
All right.
This is a briefing session, so if you want to vote, you can certainly do so, but to suspend the rules takes two-thirds vote.
All right. So let's, um, let's, are there any, um, updates on this? Uh, I'd like to, can you, can you give us a brief briefing? This is, uh, 20, 2015 dash zero two six Municipal Service District, uh, B O A. If you could give us a, uh, 30 seconds on what we're doing here.
This is money that we collected last year, and we basically want to spend last year's balance to, uh, to be able to pay for the contract expenses for Huntington Park, the street improvements.
Okay.
So we just want to appropriate the money that we collected as of, and the auditors verified it, it's in the CAFRA as of 2014, June.
Okay. Any questions? Allison? No? Okay. Need, uh, first of all, a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. I'm moved we suspend the rules so we can vote on this tonight.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, rules have been suspended for this. Uh, need a motion to take action on it tonight to approve this, uh, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the M S D B O A.
A second.
Motion, a second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that carries. Thank you for that. Uh, item 12, uh, items with no update. There's still no update? Rodney's gone?
No.
Ben, no update? Okay. Um, that item, uh, is going to be acted upon in two weeks, so, just do it. Uh, 13 announcements, next meeting, so we have a business session on March 24th. Next briefing is, uh, April 14th. And any final comments before we adjourn the meeting?
None.
Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved that we adjourned.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much. Uh...